Good evening. Welcome to the City Council regular meeting this Monday evening, May 5. Feliz Cinco de Mayo. I now call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Svirko Guditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We have a very full list of ceremonial items as we kick off this meeting tonight. The very first one is the acknowledgement of the Aragon High School students who received a 4.0 grade. We're here to continue to celebrate our students with a 4.0 grade point average. Tonight's recognition is specifically for Aragon High School. We're excited to congratulate these outstanding students. Here's how this evening will proceed. I will invite the principal up and the students will be ushered in to be congratulated by the city council. And joining them on the dais will be Deputy Mayor and Councilwoman Serko Kadiki, who are both Aragon Don alumni, so they're your own. And then proceeding after this, we will all come down to take a photo with all of you. So we will begin by calling up Principal Dr. Michael Jones. Welcome, Dr. Jones. Dr. Jones will read all the students' names, and once the full group has been recognized, we'll have you line up on the other side and then come into the front and we'll take a picture as a big group. So, good evening, Dr. Jones, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Newsom, council members, fellow citizens of San Mateo. I am Dr. Michael Jones, a proud principal of Aragon High School. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present our students tonight who have excelled and achieved 4.0 status. And so without further ado, I'd like to present our students. Camille Childress.
Excuse me, doctor. We're trying to take pictures, so students, as you come through, kind of give a quick look over to the right and flash your certificate for your picture. Thank you. Continue. Sorry about that.
Okay, all good.
Thank you once again, Mayor and council members. I am proud to present our 4.0 Aragon Don. See you tonight.
Congratulations, Dons. Come on up front. We're all gonna take a picture. Let's go.
I will also read the names of students who were not able to make it upon the request of the council member. Brooke Barson, Tyfer Chan, Chloe Chin, Melody Chin, Kiara Chu, Felicity Corti, Luana Deniston, Leah Hawkins, Calvin Hong, Jackie Jin, Arjun Kadambi, Nicholas Key, Sarah Klein, Hannah Lee, Ceylon Lu, Melody Lu, Felix Ma, Kade McKenzie, Sora Mizutani, Thomas Ni, Stella Pissaro, Marcus Reif, Naveen Schwarzkopf, Jaden Tang, Lauren Tasbass, Sierra Troy, Leanne Wang. Thank you.
All of that. Thank you, Mayor.
One of those Tuesday. He's not here. Nicholas just got his Eagle Scout award yesterday.
4.0 and an Eagle Scout.
Outstanding.
Fill in a little bit back here.
Everybody squeeze in?
All right, so on three, what are we gonna say? Go Dons. One, two, three.
Come back and join our boards and commissions.
Eventually, we'd love to see you on the dais.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do you guys remember when we congratulated?
Yeah, I didn't get a 4.0.
Yep. It was not honored for a 4.0. All right, we're gonna wait just a minute or two to kind of let everybody clear out comfortably, and then we'll be moving along to our next proclamation. Are Wesley, Toaca, Ruby, Montana, and Kenneth Zito all here? If you could all make your way to the front, that'd be fantastic. If you could all make your way to the front, that'd be fantastic. Welcome. So our next proclamation is, oh, I guess I should open it up. Is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month a proclamation? We're joined by Kenneth Zito from Self Help for the Elderly. Wesley Toke, I'm sorry, I keep him Taoka, sorry Wesley. San Mateo Japanese American Community Center. And we were supposed to be joined by Toli Pha, but she unfortunately had a family emergency, so we're joined by Ruby Montana. Welcome, Ruby. Whereas, San Mateo County is home to a dynamic AAPI community with nearly 31% of San Mateo County residents identifying as Asian or Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. And whereas, the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, the city of San Mateo celebrates the contributions and influence of notable AAPI figures and embraces the cultural traditions that enrich our city. And whereas, San Mateo is partnering with the community organizations to celebrate AAPI Heritage Month by providing special events and learning opportunities where residents can broaden their understanding and appreciation for this community's traditions and history. And whereas, AAPI Heritage Month is both a time to embrace the unique backgrounds and experiences that make us who we are, and a time to reflect on the painful chapters of our nation's past. And whereas, the adoption of Resolution 39 in 2020 demonstrated our commitment to combating harassment, hateful rhetoric, and violent acts against members of the AAPI community by formally condemning racism and xenophobia, and affirming our dedication to fighting discriminations in all facets of our society. And whereas, as one of the most culturally and linguistically diverse groups in the county, the AAPI community brings great vibrancy to the fabric of our nation. And now, therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., Mayor of the City of San Mateo, and by behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Congratulations and welcome. Before we move on, I'd invite each of you, if you'd like to say anything about your groups, we'd love to hear it. Does anybody have anything they would like to say?
I'll take over. I'm representing for Toli Pha. Have a family in Massancy, but I'm here to represent the islander. We're here in San Mateo. We can help. Whenever you need the help, we're here for you. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Newsom, City Council, thank you very much for honoring Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. On behalf of the San Mateos Japanese American Community Center, we very much appreciate this honor. The community center was originally founded by the Japanese American Citizens League many, many years ago to help seniors who could not speak English very well. But since then, we've expanded our activities to include all different types of cultural activities such as bonsai, Ikebana flower arrangements. We have martial arts class, Japanese class. In addition, we have books in Japanese that people could come and borrow. So I hope that you will come and visit us at some point. We're at the corner of 4th, 5th, and Clermont in downtown San Mateo. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kenneth Zito. I'm from Self Help for the Elderly. First of all, thank you so much for, Mr. Mayor and everybody. It's our honor to be here and to represent Asian American. We've been, we have been in San Mateo for almost like 35 years now, and we have served a lot of different, not only Asian, but so many people, especially for the senior also. And we will keep trying to do our best to provide all the service for the Asian Americans, seniors, citizens, and everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, sir. I'm gonna open it up to see if any of the council members would like to say something, and I think one, at least one does. Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, I want to thank Ken and Wes and Ruby for being here tonight. You may not know, but Ruby is the heart of Samaritan House's food efforts. She has Ruby's Kitchen. I'm on the board of Samaritan House, so I've taken the tour and I love the work that you do. And I just want to thank you for the, for the community that you provide, that all of you provide. Self Help is, Self Help does an amazing work in making sure that also our seniors aren't isolated, that they are, you're able to communicate in a lang, in their home language and keep them connected. So thank you for what you do. And Wes, the JCL is, the, sorry, the Japanese American Community Center is a wonderful secret in my district, and I think it's in my district. Maybe, it's okay, the mayor's district, but it is in downtown, so it's kind of borders. Okay, thanks. But it is wonderful to see, if you have a love of San Mateo history, the JACC is a great place to, to be, because it's an amazing center just full of, that really chronicles the accomplishments of Japanese Americans in San Mateo. And I'm just really proud that we are able to celebrate API Heritage Month. I'm currently the only, the sole member of the API community who's on our council, only the third member of our council who is of API heritage. And so I'm just really proud that we get to recognize our own accomplishments and we continue to create community with each other because we're not a monolith, and with all of San Mateo, because diversity is what makes our city wonderful. So thank you.
Fantastic. Does anybody else want to add? All right. We're gonna come down for a photo. All right. These ceremonial items are so much fun. Moving on to item number three, Jewish American Heritage Month, a proclamation. We are joined by Scott E. Hartley, the President of the Peninsula Temple Bethel. Start out with the, reading the proclamation. Whereas Jewish Americans have been an important part of the American story and have greatly contributed to all areas of American life and culture since our nation's earliest days. And whereas, on April 20th, 2006, the federal government proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month, stating, "As a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because of Jewish people from all over the world who choose to become American citizens. And since then, proclamations in support of Jewish American Heritage Month have been made by presidents of the United States annually. And whereas, generations of Jews have fled to the United States in search of a better life for themselves and their families, and these immigrants have made invaluable contributions in support of equality and civil rights through their leadership and achievements. And whereas, Jewish Americans connect with their Jewish identity in a variety of ways such as culturally, ethnically, religiously, and by following Jewish ethics and values. And whereas, Jewish Americans are racially, ethnically, socially, politically, and economically diverse, and around 25% of the Bay Area Jewish households includes a person of color, increasingly to nearly 40% of households if the head of the household is younger than 35." That's a mouthful. Whereas, the city of San Mateo shares an obligation to condemn and combat antisemitism wherever it exists, to include Jewish Americans in all facets of civic life, and to stand with the Jewish American community against hatred and bigotry in our cities and county, country. And whereas, there is a need for education and policies that are culturally competent when describing, discussing, or addressing the impacts of being Jewish in all aspects of American society, including discourse and policy. And we, whereas we celebrate the rich and diverse heritage of the Jewish American community, including those who live, work, and play in San Mateo. And whereas, we recognize Jewish American commitment to civic engagement and how San Mateo has enriched by local Jewish institutions and synagogues. Now, therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., Mayor of the City of San Mateo, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month. Be it further resolved, San Mateo will continue to confront antisemitism and other forms of hate impacting the Jewish community, supporting local education about the diversity of our Jewish American community, and integrating Jewish American culture in the future programs, activities, and ceremonies. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom, and thank you, City Council. That is quite a proclamation, Mayor. Thank you so much for that. As the, it's an honor to serve as the President of Peninsula Temple Bethel, just up the street from here. We are, we were founded in 1950, so this year we are celebrating our 75th year here in the city of San Mateo and are very excited about all the, all the events and celebrations we're gonna have involved in that. Unfortunately, as your proclamation stated, it is important to have the proper security at our synagogue, and we are so grateful to the city of San Mateo and everyone on this council and the city attorney and the rest of the people here for all the support that they give us. On behalf of our Rabbi Lisa Kingston, our Rabbi Rebecca Hecht, our Executive Director Kate Lauser, and our cantor Alana Jagoda, thank you so much for this honor and thank you so much for that proclamation. It's actually very nice that we were, we shared the dais with, with the Samaritan House. We're very active with them too and, and are very proud of all of the efforts that we get in the interfaith community and the interfaith committees that we work on. It's really wonderful to be as a lifelong member of the peninsula, born and raised in Belmont, Carlmont grad, with a kid who went to, all right, go Scots, and a kid who went to Hillsdale and a kid who went to San Mateo High, none at Aragon. It is really nice to be here tonight, so thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Want to speak, anyone? I think one of our council members would like to speak.
Thank you for being here. I think I'm pleased to join the entire City Council in recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month, and I think it's important for us to remember the many past and ongoing contributions of the Jewish Americans in this country. And I just encourage everyone to celebrate honor and protect the diversity of San Mateo. So thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you.
All right. Well, we're gonna come up and take a photo. All right. Our fourth ceremonial item of the night is National Police Week proclamation. I invite Chief Ed Barberini and all the officers in attendance to come on down. Thank you, surprise to Mr. Mayor. Welcome. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the San Mateo Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of residents of our community. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the San Mateo Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the Mayor of the City of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby call upon all citizens of San Mateo and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe this week, the week of May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week, and call upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to responsibilities have rendered a dedicated, dedicated service to their community, and in doing so have established themselves as an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. I further acknowledge that Wednesday, May 15th, 2025, is Peace Officers Memorial Day, and call upon all citizens of the city of San Mateo to honor those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in rec, in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respects to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We appreciate you taking the time to recognize us. You probably already know this, but I'm a very, very fortunate person. I get to come to work with an incredible bunch of people every day who don't seek any recognition or gratitude, although it's very well deserved. So thank you for taking the time to do that. You have a police department that is a very dedicated, tenacious, and committed group of people that are looking to serve the community by protecting those, from those who are looking to cause harm to others, and they are very, very good at doing that, however they do in a compassionate way and show a genuine care for those that they serve. So I couldn't be more proud to stand side by side with, with all of them. Thank you for the recognition. May 15th is Peace Officer Memorial Day, and as you know, on May 23rd, we do commemorate the day that, you know, one of the two dark days in our city where we lost one of our own in Sergeant Joinville. So we will have a memorial ceremony on, on May 23rd, the day that, that he was killed in the line of duty, and pray that we never have to do that again. So thank you again for, for taking the time to do this. I know that it's a busy ceremonial calendar, but we do appreciate the, the recognition on behalf of these fine men and women. We thank you for your support as well as the support of the community. So thanks. Thank you.
We're gonna come down for a photo soon. Want to say something? Thank you for all enjoying us or staying and celebrating with us all these ceremonial items tonight. We'll now move on to our consent calendar. We're moving on to the, we're moving on beyond the ceremonial portion of tonight's meeting, which includes business items being considered by the council. For that reason, I would like to recommend all in the room and online that we will be enforcing our rules of decorum. As such, we do not allow for cheering, jeering, or booing during the business portion of the meeting, as this tends to put a chill on public comment. Our goal is to ensure that all perspectives are heard. Our motto is give respect, get respect, and we appreciate your cooperation with this. City Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number five, citywide operations management system master services agreement. Item number six, 2655 and 2755 Campus Drive Public Improvements Adoption. Item number seven, downtown Business Improvement Area Approval. Item number eight, side letter of agreement, Police Technical Services Administrator Classification Representation Adoption. Item number nine, Minimum Wage Enforcement Agreement. Item number 10, Electric Vehicle Fleet Program Terms and Conditions Approval. Item number 11, 385 Second Avenue Lease Agreement Renewal Reauthorization. And finally, item number 12, Letter of Opposition to the Current U.S. 101 S State Route 92 Interchange Direct Connector Project Proposal Approval.
Feel like I've missed a step. Is there any member who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there any members of the public who wish to comment on any of the consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests for public speak?
Yes, we do. For consent calendar, I have one request to speak in chambers and one in our virtual environment. So I will start with our in-person, which will be three minutes per speaker. So we'll invite Mike Swire up for public comment, and then we'll go to our virtual public comment.
Hello, everyone. Thanks, Mayor Newsom and members of the council. Thanks you for your prompt letter in opposition to the 10192 Direct Connector project. I appreciate your listening to the community and your rapid action in order to prevent a waste of additional taxpayer dollars on this project. I think for the most part, it's a great letter. I do not agree, however, with the state the following statement and ask that it be removed. Quote, however, it's unclear whether spending $200 million or more to expand highways is the best use of taxpayer funds, especially as there may be more environmentally friendly ways to address congestion in the corridor. For example, we could explore strategic highway widening within the existing highway footprint that benefits those who live in the cities of San Mateo and Foster City rather than building toll lanes for East Bay commuters, et cetera. My question is, how is widening Highway 92 or other highways, quote, environmentally friendly, and how does it reduce congestion? As you've heard several times from the community last month, widening highways does not solve congestion. Instead, it encourages more people to drive. I also included a letter with a video describing induced demand, which is real, according to traffic engineers. Of course, more cars on the road means more pollution. Transportation is the number one source of greenhouse gas emissions in San Mateo County. In addition, more cars means more air pollution, increasing childhood asthma, cardiovascular disease, and problem pregnancies. If we widen 92, this means the additional air pollution will most impact the communities adjacent to 92. This includes Sunny Bray, Hayward Park, and Fiesta Gardens in Mayor Newsom's district, Beresford Manor, Foothill Terrace and Homestead in Councilmember Nash's district, Beresford and San Mateo Terrace in Councilman Lorain's district, and Harbertown and Lake Shore in Councilwoman Sorko Kadicki's district. Why would we increase air pollution, traffic violence, and congestion in these neighborhoods? I request that you remove this language from the letter. Leaving it there will lead to confusion as to the council's intent. Please remember that while eminent domain was the number one concern of those who spoke out at the recent council meeting, a very large number of residents mentioned induced demand and the fact that widening highways has and never will reduce congestion. Thank you for considering. Bye.
Thank you. We will now move to our virtual environment. Again, this is a reminder, this is for consent calendar items, not general public comment. I will now invite Giu Lianni Carlini to unmute your mic and provide your comment.
Hi, all. I'm going to keep it short since my comment was very much what Mr. Swire just said. I want to applaud all of you for the draft letter that is in the packet to the SMCTA opposing the 10192 connector. It's a boondoggle and a fantastic waste of money and will just fail to meet its objectives and will only make things worse. Likewise, I'm very concerned about the language suggesting that there would be any way to have a strategic highway widening that would be beneficial. All highway widens. The science is clear. They fail. They don't reduce congestion, and they make many things worse. So my ask likewise, please remove that just that one sentence, right? That one sentence undercuts so much of what you all are trying to say. And what you've written is just amazing. So make it all much better by removing that one sentence. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. That concludes public comment on consent calendar.
We will close public comment now and move on to any is there any comment you want to make comment? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, do we want to on on paragraph seven, sentence three, strike that sentence, and then that's the letter? Is there any support for that?
I would be okay with that.
Have any feedback? So there was two kind of thoughts behind the comment. One was that we have a lot of congestion on the off-ramps, particularly going to the high schools in the morning. And so as opposed to widening, maybe we would make it widening of the off-ramps, because what happens is traffic backs up and sits and causes more congestion on the freeway. The other part to it was that we're trying to make sure that our partners in Foster City are are going to co-sign on with us, and they expressed a concern that by completely turning down all the funds, that there would be maybe a loss of opportunity for other public improvements, which aren't necessarily even just highway widening, but things like sound walls or things that would be beneficial to the community. So for that reason, we were basically leaving it in. And if you to your own point, it is a little vague, and it was purposely made so. So that would be my concern about removing it, but I I will let my council all weigh in. It sounds like I have two maybes and two. Okay, so we're going to leave it? We'll leave it. Okay, so we'll leave it. And then next question is, is there a motion from the council to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, please call roll.
Deputy Mayor Lorain?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmembers Fioke Guditsky?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
If I could just make a comment on item number seven, the downtown business improvement area approval, I would really strongly encourage everyone to read the annual report, which is attached to this item. It's going to be presented at our next council meeting, but I think it really reflects the hard work that the community has done, the downtown's San Mateo Association, the city staff, and our area chamber in really trying to make our downtown even more vibrant and successful. So I encourage everyone to come to the meeting next time to learn more, but in advance, I'm very excited that this is here. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for calling that out. All right, we're going to move on to item number 13, new business, Delaware Street Safe Routes to School.
Mayor Newsom, we can go to general public comment.
I'm sorry. I how did I do that? I skipped general public comment. So sorry. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the council's discretion and can be extended if the council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Clerk, please tally the total number of requests for speaking on general public comment.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. We have received one request for an organized presentation, and we're receiving some additional requests. So we have a total, just one moment. So in chambers, we have one organized presentation followed by eight individual speakers, and in our virtual environment, we have a total of five requests to speak. So that would be a total of 13 individual speakers and one organized presentation.
Did he say that he wanted to speak on item 13? Because to be clear, this is only for general public comments.
Yeah, we've received some additional requests for general.
Okay, so you've got that filtered out. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so.
It'll be two minutes per speaker for individual public comment, and then five minutes for our organized presentation.
Thank you.
So we'll take our organized presentation first, and that will be community members Melissa and Foz Raya speaking on behalf of a larger group. Let me just one moment. All right. All right, go right ahead.
Hello, I am Farzana Yonchi. Melissa Toboni and I will be speaking on behalf of the Parkside Neighborhood this evening. Neighbors Paul Galliano, Carmen, and Santiago Ruiz, along with Rich Ruiz, are here in support as well. First and foremost, we would like to thank you for your time. We are here to discuss the ongoing construction at Parkside Monastery School, which is located essentially in all of our backyards. This project has caused not only damage to our homes, but has also caused countless sleepless nights and continuous disruption to our daily lives since the project started in January of 2024. We understand this doesn't fall within your jurisdiction as the school is managing this project. However, we are residents of the city of San Mateo, and we need your help. We will now highlight some of the key issues for you.
Problems began right away, starting with the construction notice on the slide, which was received on January 21, notifying us of the planned pre-construction meeting between neighbor school district general contractors, SC builders, for January 24, three days later at 5:00 p.m. Not only was this incredibly short notice, but the meeting was held at a very inconvenient time, not to mention construction started regardless of any concerns the following Monday, January 29. This is a known violation that has been swept under the rug. We have not even complained numerous times to the site superintendent, and the video that is showing right now, if do we have audio on that one? It is me the other day at 6:00 in the morning, walking over and telling the construction crew that they are in violation. It's 6:00 a.m., an hour prior to when they're supposed to be there, and this is well over a year into the project. Okay, now, there's a complete lack of regard, and we've been in constant communication with many members of the school board. Amerufo has confirmed work has started as early as 6:00 a.m. and ended as late as 8:00 p.m., and this has not been adhered to in the past and continues to be an ongoing issue.
So in the beginning of May 2024, an auger was brought on site by Malcolm Drilling. The best way to describe it would be a hook and a ball that were not secured to the frame, therefore swing in the wind and bang every night, all night long. And this was going on for four to six weeks. If you can just only imagine how disruptive this was to the sleep of all of us in the neighborhood. Additionally, the foundation work that was done at the school with the auger caused our houses to shake like an earthquake the size of Loma Prieta, but for hours over multiple weeks and all day long.
Hold on a second. I welcome you guys to watch these videos on your own. You will hear the sound of the auger banging.
So we continuously find that we're being given the runaround when trying to get any issues resolved. No one wants to take responsibility and directs us to another entity, department, or person. Again, the multiple matters of the noise violation and being outside the hours allotted hours, I for one time called the police department because it was before hours. They sent somebody out. I don't know if they actually came or when they came, but I later called the court enforcement. Court enforcement directed me to the sheriff's department, to the back to the police department. I called the police department again. Police department directed me to the sheriff's department based on the address. Calling the sheriff's department, they told me that it's not their jurisdiction. So I don't even know who to call to make a noise complaint. At the end of the day, we still have no idea who to call and who handles court enforcement for our neighborhood, specifically the address of the school.
Yes. Several of us have damage to our homes, as you can see, including cracked walls, window frames, ceilings, as well as countertops separating from the walls, our driveways, walkways, as well as existing cracks becoming worse. This is also the case with the surrounding sidewalks, which we hope will be addressed by the city for repair before anyone is injured. Many of us have shifting gates, multiple doors within our homes, including front doors, side doors, closets, bathrooms, and main garage doors, where they're no longer closed properly, if at all, and are misaligned. Some are experiencing windows that are stuck and no longer open or close. We have experienced the pungent smell of raw sewage permeating into our homes on multiple occasions. When we have complained, the school district took no accountability, even though we have pictures and videos of construction workers digging and installing the backflow device in the front of the school. Instead, they again blame public works as they have done in the past. The weekend of July 13, 2024, they hit the main sewer line, which runs along our shared fence line, another incident they denied happening. We had to live with unbearable smell for days while feces was floating along our fences.
The amount of construction dust on our vehicles, as well as in our homes, makes it makes it impossible for us to open our windows and doors. Additionally, as cars drive by the school, it stirs up a large amount of dirt and dust. I'm going to move forward since we're running out of time.
In closing, since we feel we are getting nowhere with the constant runaround we have been given, we kindly request city council set a two-by-two meeting with the school board trustees to assist us in coming to a resolution as the school board continues to ignore us as well as our legal counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to our individual speakers, and that'll be two minutes per speaker. When I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that would be greatly appreciated. Our first speaker will be Kevin Simpson, followed by Michael Sevilla and Allison McQueen.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. It's good to see you all and to be here again with you tonight. Last Saturday night, we had the third recurrence in in 18 months of a familiar pattern in my neighborhood of North Central. And while there are a lot of controversial topics in North Central, specifically on Humboldt Street, I think I speak for the whole neighborhood when I ask you, beg you to do something about this. At 10:30 at night, once again, a horrific crash sound rang out, followed by a light show, the likes of which I've never seen on the public streets of Cincinnati of San Mateo or Cincinnati. This was at Second and Humboldt. Once again, a massive accident caused by a drunk driver in the late hours of a weekend night at a four-way stop. We've had three of these in the last 18 months. Now, PD was there right away, and with the help of neighbors, apprehended the missgrant who, after hitting parked cars, then drove recklessly around the neighborhood in a drunken stupor and circled the block three times. I don't know why he did that, but fortunately, he did because they were able to nail him. We're about to begin talking about removing 100 or restoring 100 parking spaces to Humboldt Street at the cost of $10,000 or $20,000 or $30,000. But at the December meeting and the January meeting, so we've had to talk about that project, the one thing that everybody who is participating in that issue has agreed on is we need traffic calming and better safety measures on Humboldt. And this is just another example. By the way, Humboldt and Second wasn't even included in the data about traffic safety statistics that you all considered when we talked about that project. So I'm begging you, please do something about this intersection before 10 people from five different houses are called out to see somebody dead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next three speakers will be Michael Sevilla, followed by Allison McQueen and Tony Paul.
Good evening. I'm back again, and and you're probably asking, well, why are you here? We're having a meeting on Wednesday with Park and Rec. They're going to offer me something. It's not enough. They're going to give me a fix, half-measure fix. And I just I'm holding in my hand a petition to end the 10, 14-day reservation window for VIP members. I have over 113 signatures. Most of them are San Mateo residents. 95% of them are golfers at Poplar Creek, and they all want to get rid of this draconian system that prevents residents from enjoying the golf course. I have read the city charter, well, skimmed it, and some of the municipal code. I can't find anything about VIPs. It seems like that might be setting us up for. It seems like that might be setting us up for litigation. And this is something that is not being done at any other municipal golf course in the country that I know of. I've done some research, called about 10 other golf courses. Nobody has one of these different tiered systems. In fact, I think if San Francisco tried to do that, there'd be an armed rebellion. I really feel sorry for the residents of other cities. But it's not the fault of San Mateo that they closed their golf courses or didn't build golf courses. In Redwood City, there was plans to build two golf courses. The residents said, no, we don't want it. There's been closures in Colma, Santa Clara, Hayward, Redwood, San Jose. And it's really caused us to take this very seriously. Please, let's do something about this.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Allison McQueen, followed by Tony Paul and Mike Swire.
I just biked over here for my son's baseball game at Trinity Park. I use the Humboldt and Palm Ave bike lanes. I have six points to share with you about keeping the Humboldt Street bike lanes. Number one, show me the money. We don't have it. $6 million deficit this year and $15 million deficit next. We don't have $3 million to spend on 100 parking spots. Number two, your priorities. We have a city library instructional disrepair, a rec center and a police station with failing roofs. The lagoon needs to be dredged. The village wants to get off the flood map. A downtown parking garage with major structural issues. And our only two public pools are both in disrepair. Number three, show me your data. Everyone at this meeting can take out their phone and Google cyclist, Colma, Humboldt, San Mateo, and you can see a terrible crash that occurred in 2021. The data that the city is currently presenting shows no bike crashes. Did this crash not happen? Number four, San Mateo citizens support the bike lanes. 14 public school PTAs have voted to sign a letter asking you to keep the Humboldt bike lanes to enable safe routes to school. Every PTA who has voted has said to keep the bike lanes. A daily journal poll had 83% support for the lanes. 631 people signed the petition and the city survey showed 70% support. Population growth, the passage of measure T means growth for San Mateo with increased height limits. We don't have room for more roads. We need transit, biking and walking to enable population growth. Last, equity. Why are almost all of the residential parking permit programs in San Mateo except one west of the 101? And why are they mainly concentrated west of El Camino? We know folks park in North Central and North Shoreview and then snag an Uber to SFO. The city council promised North Central permit parking program to address parking needs. What happened? Let's move forward, not backward.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Tony Paul, followed by Mike Swire and Andrew Ryan.
Oh, please speak. Mayor Newsom and council member. Today I want to announce a new material cellular concrete to protect the houses and essential facilities from fire. My name is Tony Paul. I'm licensed civil engineer. Work with Caltrans currently, senior engineer there. And why this material is important? We just had a fire on LA in January, and I volunteered there, but there were many people that volunteered before me. And so the area is no different than LA for the fire. So the new material that I'm looking at is cellular concrete advanced research material. I want them to be an agenda item. This is non-agenda, but I want it to be an agenda with the staff to read it and go on it. Why cellular? It is four-hour fireproof and it's at 2,000 degree temperature. It keeps the fire from spreading. Currently, the firefighters goes into two battles. The trees on fire and the houses on fire. This will concentrate only on the trees because the fire, the house will be protected and will give ample time for the firefighters to go there and put the fire. It is morally correct for us to do this. And especially for facilities such as hospital, schools that can go on fire. Moreover, it saves energy and for solar proponent. And homeowners will be safer to stay at home and not run away from the fire. It reduces the insurance, create jobs and also save lives. For years, we have protected the houses from the inside with the sprinkler system and all that. But we've never.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Mike Swire. Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Mike Swire, followed by Andrew Ryan and Trina Pierce.
Hi, thanks again. So I sent a note to, did you circulate the note to council in terms of the video and such? Did everyone see that so far? I'm not getting total heads, and it's not possible to show the video now.
Not for individual speakers.
So, I mean, that's disappointing that I can't throw a 40-second video on an issue that's not on the, I mean, it doesn't make sense. That's the policy of the council?
So just really quickly for the city council, typically the policy here, typically here with the city of San Mateo through the city clerk is that during individual public comment videos aren't shown. We haven't allowed that. That's something that we can look at with our council rules coming up in the next couple of months. But at this time, just from staff's position has been that we're just upholding what has been the process for the city of San Mateo. But it's ultimately this council's decision.
I don't, I try to find that policy online. I didn't see it anywhere, so I don't.
It's been just the, how it's been administered in the past. I've been told by the city clerk's office that it hasn't, hasn't been allowed in the past. What I'm asking the council, they can take that up.
How about this? We're gonna uphold the policy because it's the policy, but we will all commit to watching the video, all five of us, right? Okay.
Next month, I'll come back and I'll turn in a different slip and then I can do it?
Or you could speak now as to what you want to speak about.
If you do, I'd like to share the video. I think that's my first speech, right?
The way, the way it works is that if there's a group presentation, my understanding is through how it's worked here is that the video can be shown at that time, just like the last group presentation that has taken place.
If I turn in a different slip, I can show a video.
If you have individuals that you're speaking on behalf of.
Okay. So this is just a pattern of.
I don't think we should do it.
The city is consistently trying to squelch opposition to this project. You already heard from Kevin Simpson today that you guys didn't even reflect the fact that a person had died on the street in the data that you presented. When you guys went out with that last meeting, you didn't even put a placard on the street where the people who are using the bike lane would know about that meeting. And now you're telling me because I filled out one form and not another, I can't show a video. But if I come back next month with that form, I can show the video. Why is the city so afraid to have an adequate discussion on the true merits of bike lanes? I don't understand this.
The timer is running. Please provide your public comment.
I mean, that's all I have to say. I guess I'll come back next month and fill out the right form.
Thank you. Our next, our next three speakers will be Andrew Ryan, followed by Trina Pierce and Anna Leib.
Honorable council members, for decades now, the planning department has been illegally enforcing a historic district in Glazenwood. Since the 1990s, Glazenwood homeowners seeking to remodel their homes have been forced to pay thousands of dollars to historic consultants and incur months or even years of additional delays because they were told that their houses were located in a historic district. The planning department claims that Glazenwood is a National Register of Historic Places eligible historic district, but in fact, no paperwork to this effect was ever submitted. Community Development Director Zachary Dahl has admitted in writing that Glazenwood is not a formally adopted historic district and is not protected under any city ordinance. You all have a copy in your inbox and yet refuses to change the city's position. Therefore, I'm asking the city council to direct the planning commission to, or sorry, the planning department to immediately remove Glazenwood's designation, including redrawing city maps and canceling all in-progress historic reviews on existing permit applications for affected properties. The Glazenwood example perfectly illustrates why the RingCon work is so dangerous and should be either canceled or severely curtailed. On one hand, city staff are telling us that RingCon's work won't create any new historic districts. But at the same time, city staff are telling us that they can create new historic districts whenever and wherever they want. Both can't be true, and surely you understand our deep concerns. Every neighborhood in San Mateo deserves to be governed by clear, consistent and lawful policies. Council, it's time to ask city staff some hard questions about Glazenwood and the RingCon contract. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Trina Pierce, followed by Anna Leib.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. And to the city manager, I want to thank you guys for kind of extinguishing a, I don't know if you want to call it racism, discrimination, favoritism. I don't know what you want to call it, but you guys put a knob in it. And then as I stand here, I see San Washtel stands united against hate. So it was just good to see that you guys are united against hate, and I appreciate that. The residents in San Mateo were very excited to hear about the parking being removed. And then again, we get a slap in the face, the installation of a bike lane on Delaware. What about Humboldt? I mean, why are we always removed from everything? And then, and that one goes south. So we're just asking, why don't we store Humboldt's parking before you go on to another area? So, and you know, the citizens are just getting tired of this. After that fiasco last week, I had to calm everybody down. And then we come back to this. And then we hear North Central's wasting money. We offered to go out there and paint. I've had more people that have said, okay, Trina, we'll paint black. We can't put the white in because that's all precise, but we can sure paint black. So I'm just asking that, you know, people look at North Central and think about what we need. I mean, in North Shoreview, you stop the buses. We've been fighting this for years. Can we just think of North Central? And the residents are hearing that they're going to Fremont and Idaho. They're not happy about that. It's like, finish Humboldt, you know? And then they come to me and tell me, and I can't do anything. They need to come in here and do it themselves, but they don't. But maybe they will when you start trying to go on Humboldt, and I mean on Fremont and Idaho. So just wanted to thank you guys for that. Hopefully we will have a great meeting because we got everything out late, but I appreciate that.
Thank you. Our final speaker in chambers for general public comment is Anna Leib.
Hi, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us. I'm also a resident of North Humboldt. I'm here today to say that as someone who cycles myself to work and with my four-year-old daughter in tow, I'm really hoping that you will continue to think about the future and our children and prioritize our safety, the safety of my family and many families in our community by keeping the bike lane and continuing to expand bike infrastructure while honoring the needs of the other residents in our neighborhood. I wanted to quickly remind you of the first two points in the congestion section of the San Mateo General Plan, which committed to increase the safety, convenience and appeal of walking, bicycling and transit and reduce single occupancy vehicle trips to reduce air pollution that causes acute and chronic illnesses in equity priority communities. I think that if San Mateo wants to thrive going forward, we need to think about prioritizing modes of transit that are not in cars. I think that in the previous meeting, which I was unable to speak at, there were a lot of myths perpetuated about cycling and walking as modes of transportation, that they are only for young people or healthy people or people with money or people with infinite time. I don't think that's true. My 70-something parents love taking their granddaughter out on bicycles. My brother has a medical condition that prevents him from driving. Bicycling gives him freedom. I am a working mom with two children under the age of four. I do not have infinite time, but cycling is a way to spend time with my children, get from place to place and enjoy some time outside and exercise. I want people of all ages in our community to have the opportunity to walk and bike safely. Safety is really important to allowing people to try to explore new modes of transportation. Lastly, economics. Owning a bicycle is much cheaper than owning a car. I don't pretend to argue that everyone can do all of their errands on cars or on bikes or on foot. Of course, some people need cars, some people prefer cars. But I think if our community prioritizes it, we can be a place that is less car-dependent and safer and more vibrant for everyone. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment where our final speaker will be Lena. And our first speaker will be Robert Whitehair. Robert, please unmute your mic.
Mayor Newsom, Deputy Mayor Lorraine, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here tonight to talk about Assembly Bill 306. I think you're probably aware of 306. It's a bill in the legislature that would terminate reach codes for six years. All the good work that the council has done over the last three years in electrifying homes and adopting reach codes would be put aside. I'm asking you formally to take a position against Assembly Bill 306, either tonight or meeting in the future. And I appreciate you taking the time. If you've already taken action on this, I thank you for that. But please oppose Assembly Bill 306. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be John McKenna. John, please unmute your mic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Honorable mayor and city council, again, my name is John McKenna. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I liked the previous speaker. I'm asking the city of San Mateo to adopt a resolution opposing California State Bill AB 306. As the previous speaker mentioned, this bill would essentially disallow new residential building codes at the state and local level for the next six-plus years. As written, the bill would prevent the adoption of new local reach codes. It would prevent the adoption of pending updates to the national electric code, updates that would help avoid unnecessary electrical panel upgrades. It would prevent code updates that would streamline the building process, incorporate cost savings measures and eliminate the ability to update the code that would take advantage of new technologies that come into our world. The bill would take away local control. And importantly, it would make it virtually impossible for the city of San Mateo to achieve its building decarbonization goals. So for those reasons, I ask that the city formally oppose this bill, AB 306. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Deborah Rosenfield. Deborah, please unmute your mic.
Thank you, mayor and city council. First, thank you very much for your thoughtful and supportive Jewish American Heritage Month proclamation tonight. Second, I'm following up on my comment at the last city council meeting on bicycle improvements project on South Delaware Street between Bermuda and Saratoga. The current plan is to reduce southbound Delaware Street between Bermuda and Saratoga to one lane.
Excuse me, sorry, Deborah, this is actually for general public comment items. This is for items not on the agenda. I believe you're referring to agenda item number 13. If you wouldn't mind, please hold in your comments to that time, once we get to that agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. We'll move on to our next speaker, Giuliani Carlini. Please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Hey, all. So San Mateo is proposing adding bike boulevards. A couple of places I've been hearing about in different council sessions. Please do. I applaud this, this is a great idea. But please don't rip out existing bike lanes to do this. Those bike lanes exist, especially Humboldt. They need to be improved, not removed. Bike lanes make streets safer for all users. You've heard a couple of complaints tonight about Humboldt and other intersections not being safe. But bike lanes make them safer. Removing them is foolish. A few folks have complained that bike lanes are not utilized enough. That's not true. Lots of folks do. More can. They don't because the bike lanes are still not good enough. Even with fork segments of straight, safe streets, people aren't gonna ride if only part of their ride, part of their route is safe. We need more folks to ride. We need more, better, safer bike routes, not fewer. Please, stop removing bike lanes or proposing removal of bike lanes. Let's figure out how to add more and make the ones that we have better. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for general public comment will be Lena. Lena, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Hi, I'm a business owner on El Camino Real. And for the last few months, there have been really large moving trucks parked on El Camino, basically all day and all night. And I'm just wondering, particularly on my side of the street, which is the east side or north face. or north face or north direction, there's no, there's nothing that stops them from parking there. Like, across the street, there's a two-hour minimum, I think, or maximum, I should say. Anyway, I just wondered if there's anything that can be done about that or what I should do to go about resolving that matter, because it blocks the views of the businesses on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment. Sorry. Would you mind going ahead and state the location, Lena?
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can still hear.
My location is the Cuban Kitchen at 3799 South El Camino Real, and the trucks are each about 26 feet long, and there are three of them that park there all day and all night.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lena. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment. Okay. Okay. So we will then, I'm all over the place, sorry. We'll close public comment and open new business. Did we want to address a few things?
So I'm happy to, you know, we got a group presentation this evening. Happy to bring that up if it's up to Mayor Newsom and Councilmember Fernandez at our next two-by-two meeting. It's going to be scheduled for May 29th with San Mateo Foster City School District. Additionally, we can look into the noise issue as well, so we can follow up with those two items if that's it. Another council pleasure. I'm seeing nodding heads.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. You're muted, but.
Is there any update that can be provided in terms of planning for traffic calming measures in the, in North Central? Or is that going to be updated in the, with regard to the project?
So the direction that we received from the council was that the traffic calming measures and safety measures was going to be part of the Humboldt discussion that we were having. There will be a community meeting. We're looking at a date, I believe, in the beginning of June. To kick that off, the SIC, our Public Works Director, is on his head, and this will kick off the community engagement that'll happen from the beginning of June all the way through, I believe, September. We'll be engaging the community and all stakeholders regarding the Humboldt bike lanes, and then it'll go to the SIC Commission, I believe, in November. Yes, again. And then from there, hopefully get to the council either end of January or in February for a final decision. And that's what we got going on.
And we're going to be doing a lot of outbound communication to make people aware.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we have actually a request for a five-minute break, so we will take a break and then resume in five minutes to talk about new business. So five-minute break. Thanks. While we wait for our fellow councilwoman to get back to the dais, we will resume new business. Item 13, the Delaware Street Safe Routes to School Corridor Bike Lane Improvements Update. We'll have a presentation by Sang Hee Cho. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Newsom, and good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Newsom. My name is Sang. I work for the Public Works Department over here in the City of San Mateo. I'm an associate engineer in the Traffic Engineering Group, and I'm also accompanied here by Bethany Lopez, senior engineer for the team, as well as online, we have our project design consultant, Joe Paul, attending, and he'll be able to, they'll both be able to assist with any questions you may have at the end of tonight's presentation. So without further ado, we can kind of move along. The goal of tonight's meeting is to get, get council feedback for the project, and this is tonight's presentation agenda. We'll be going over the project background as well as how the project came about to be, outreach efforts that were conducted last year, May of 2024, as well as last month, some existing conditions on South Delaware Street to set some context as well as definitely warrant the need for upgrading the existing bike lanes on South Delaware Street. Then we'll kind of dive into our more specific, project-specific details and design corridor-wide as well as at these specific intersections for our pedestrian and bike safety enhancements. And then lastly, we'll have time for discussion and questions from council. With that, I also wanted to take some time to actually talk through some of the project goals. So firstly, and we've kind of listed this one, two, and three, with the top priority being improvement of bicyclists and pedestrian safety for the project. So our primary, our primary goal was to create a safe, low-stress environment for bikes and pedestrians, which includes residents of all ages and abilities. By upgrading our existing bike facilities and enhancing pedestrian crossings, we aim to reduce conflicts with bike vehicles and encourage more people to walk and bike. This is especially important on a corridor like South Delaware Street, which serves many school students and connects to other citywide bike and pedestrian routes. Parking retention for residents, we definitely recognize that on-street parking is important for our residents as a resource. Throughout the design process, we have sought to retain as much parking as possible while still meeting our safety goals through the project. And lastly, traffic operations. While maintaining efficient traffic and vehicle flow is important, in certain locations, we have had to make compromises such as narrowing travel lanes, removing a travel lane between Bermuda and Saratoga, or modifying intersections to prioritize safety improvements or other modes of travel other than vehicles. So these operational changes are necessary to make space for our protected bike lanes as well as safer pedestrian crossings, even if it means, even if it means a modest reduction in roadway capacity or changes to traffic patterns. So in summary, our project goals look to prioritize safety for bikes and pets as our highest priority, and this guided our design decisions. Parking retention and traffic operations, while they are important, in cases where there were conflicts, we have chosen to make conscious design decisions to prioritize safety, even if it means accepting some trade-offs. With that, we can kind of show you our project status. So back in 2020 to 2021, we secured Active Transportation Program project funding or state-funded grant monies for the project. In 2024 winter, we kicked off the project with analysis and preliminary design to be able to fold into the community engagement efforts that went on last year. We kicked off the design in earnest after that, and we are substantially complete with the design and looking to get feedback from the community, which we did, which we did through our follow-up community engagement last month. And we're here with you tonight to kind of get further feedback as well as talk about some of the feedback that we did receive from residents last month. We're looking to bid and award the project in a few months' time and construct a project by fall or fall to winter of this year. So with that, we can kind of go into our project design, project background, as well as our intro to the project. I do want to kind of start off by discussing how this project looks to align with the circulation elements of our General Plan 2040 in terms of the policies and actions. So in terms of the first policy, I'll kind of just go through these really quickly. The Sustainable Transportation Policy, C11, 1.1, the reduction in vehicles' mile traveled or VMT, as well as greenhouse gas emissions from transportation by encouraging this modal shift to more sustainable travel modes such as biking or walking. C1.1.2, Complete Streets. We wanted to definitely apply Complete Streets standards that facilitate safe, comfortable, efficient travel for all users of all ages and abilities that walk, bike, transit, or drive. Vision Zero, definitely, we wanted to consider this as an opportunity to improve safety where conflicts do exist on Delaware Street to eliminate fatalities and injuries on our roadway network. Prioritize, prioritize pedestrian and bike mobility needs. We prioritize pedestrian and bike, definitely, the project goal definitely encapsulates this by looking to enhance mobility, connectivity, and safety for pedestrians and bikes for our San Mateo residents. And lastly, the two actions, I'll be kind of coming back to the Bike Master Plan implementation, but the safe routes to transit, we will definitely touch on how our project seeks to connect to existing transit options and provide that safe and equitable pathway to our transit, existing transit destinations. And I wanted to also fully read Action C4.9, Bicycle Master Plan Implementation. Implement the Bicycle Master Plan's recommended programs and projects to create and maintain a fully connected, safe, and logical bikeway network and coordinate with the county-wide system. Update the Bicycle Master Plan and related adopted city plans to reflect full feature bicycle and micro-mobility facility needs to support the city circulation network. So our discussion in tonight's presentation will look to highlight just how the Delaware Street project seeks to preserve the fully connected, safe, and logical bikeway network as per the Bike Master Plan. Following up on that, we also wanted to highlight just how this project seeks to align with the current fiscal year, 24, 25 council priorities given to Public Works. Number 24 is the prioritization of the planning, design, construction, and maintenance of rapid safety improvement projects citywide while ensuring that there is a reliable city fund for long-term success. And number 37, complete all high, which this project is, as well as medium-high priority projects in the 2020 Bicycle Master Plan and the Pedestrian Master Plan with the goal of prioritizing quick-build projects where feasible. And I do want to note that we understand that council will be receiving updated city council priority numbers, and with the new list, these same priorities will be number 28 and number 40. Moving along to the Bicycle Master Plan and where our project kind of is situated with this, within the Bicycle Master Plan adopted by council back in 2020. This is definitely listed as a high priority project, as mentioned before, and how the Bicycle Master Plan actually came up with that prioritization was based on a set amount of, oh, was based on certain criteria as listed in the Bike Master Plan. Some of those criteria included destination served, safety and comfort in the existing conditions, collision history, levels of traffic stress, equity, as well as potential for future bike demand. It's also listed on the, it's also included on the Rapid Implementation Network, so we kind of see our project highlighted over here. And what the Rapid Implementation Network was, was basically a list of projects that were identified as having the greatest potential for encouraging interested but concerned cyclists due to existing level of traffic stress. These are also a series of projects that were considered low-hanging fruit that could be easily implemented by using quick-build materials that could be made even more permanent at a future time. Still on the Bicycle Master Plan, I want to talk about how San Mateo adopted the Bike Master Plan back in 2020, where Delaware was actually identified as a key north-south connector as well as a safe route to school corridor. Here we can see, one interesting point to note, actually, is that the South Delaware Street Corridor is the only continuous north-south corridor that runs straight from the northernmost city boundary or Peninsula Avenue down to the southernmost city boundary near Pacific Boulevard, where Pacific becomes Old County Road through the entire down to the southernmost city boundary near Pacific Boulevard, where Pacific becomes Old County Road, through the entire city. Therefore, this also serves to highlight how this particular project scored so highly as a part of the Bike Master Plan implementation. Zooming in, we can see in the legend for the proposed bicycle network as a part of the Bike Master Plan, that this is basically where our project limits are. We have the red dash showing the separated bike lanes, as well as the orange dash showing the Bike Boulevard treatment that we'll be defining and discussing more later tonight. We did, I also wanted to take some time to note that we have heard suggestions from residents, as well as council member, about utilizing Pacific Boulevard, shown in that purple line over here on your screens. And I do want to note that using Pacific Boulevard into Conquer Drive as a deviation from the existing plan, as shown in the Bike Master Plan, adds indirectness and, as well as circuitousness, to the bike facilities. And it also does not align with the Bike Master Plan recommendations, nor the general plan 2040 actions, for that fully connected, safe, and logical bikeway network. It adds about a quarter-mile for trips made along Delaware for our cyclists. And of note is that there is no connectivity for Fiesta Gardens along Bermuda Drive, should we actually go with this alignment. With that, we can kind of see an image of our project limits. To your right, we have from Nineteenth to Twenty-eighth Avenue, 0.7 miles of protected bikeway. And from Twenty-eighth Avenue down to Pacific Boulevard, 0.3 miles of Bicycle Boulevard, and we'll be defining these terms later on. I do want to quickly note and highlight some of the existing businesses, as well as schools, such as Fiesta Gardens, Nuova School, as well as major caltrain, major transit destinations, such as our Hillsdale Caltrain Station and Hayward Park, which is not pictured here. So this image just kind of shows how crucial this project is to enhance accessibility to different land uses and destinations within the city. Here, we have this slide shown to you describing some of the bike-related project connections that this project will serve to make. This project, this image just kind of serves to show how important this project will be as a backbone project, as it seeks to connect to existing bike facilities, shown in that solid green line, as well as future bike lane implementations currently in progress. I do also want to note that the future bike lane projects in purple, in the purple dash lines, are also all either a high or medium-high project per the Bike Master Plan. Therefore, although it shouldn't really need to be said, the timely implementation of this crucial backbone project, or the Delaware Street project, would provide greater accessibility, connectivity, and comfort for San Mateo residents, whether they're already avid bikers, or would choose to bike more often in the future with the upcoming installation of all these project efforts. With that, we can kind of talk about some of the outreach efforts that staff-led, as well as was supported on with our project design team. So here on your screen is a list of two different phases of outreach that we decided to hold last year, as well as last month, or spring of 2024 and spring of 2025. For Phase One of our outreach efforts, we definitely wanted to understand our residents' priorities for the project and what they wanted for us to implement. And for Phase Two, we definitely wanted to see if we missed anything, while also showing our residents, as well as obviously council, our more substantially completed project. And I do want to quickly note that the last bullet on Phase Two of outreach, that we'll be looking to just update our county event center at a meeting planned for later this month, for project-related changes fronting the event center on Delaware Street. So with that, we can kind of go into Phase One of outreach efforts that were held last year. This slide just shows a snapshot of our multi-channel, different community engagement efforts that went on last year. We guided residents onto our project webpage to inform them about our design via an informational YouTube video, peruse our, look at our conceptual design plans, and even give feedback via Serene Monkey. We reached folks via in-person outreach through two pop-up events, as well as handed out flyers, and also did some door knocking for residents between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. So this definitely highlights the comprehensive approach we took for Phase One of outreach. And these are some of the feedback themes that we've got from residents last year. Definitely the concerns about speeding along the corridor. As you may know, residents were worried about just general vehicle speeding excessively on Delaware Street, urging our design to consider certain traffic calming measures to help slow traffic in high-risk areas and at the intersection as well. Definitely the pedestrian and bike safety, the community that we reached out to emphasized the need for improved crosswalks, protected bike lanes, as well as enhanced warning signs to create a safer, more predictable environment for all road users. School student safety, we not only talked with parents of these families, but also students at our pop-up at the Twenty-eighth Avenue intersection. So these students were not only biking, but simply crossing, even simply crossing Delaware Street to and from transit destinations. And we definitely observed and heard feedback from these students about how dangerous it can be getting to and from school, crossing Delaware Street. And lastly, pavement conditions. So the community had concerns about the existing conditions on South Delaware Street, as well as the deteriorating road surface. And as a part of this project, we're looking to repave a portion of Delaware to give it a fresh, clean slate for our new bike infrastructure, while also giving that side benefit of giving it a better rideable surface. With that, we can talk more about the Phase Two of outreach efforts that were held largely last month, or April of 2025. So we'll be talking about the local community meeting held at the Fiesta Gardens International School, or April, on April 14, 2025. So here, we have that small little orange box highlighting just our outreach in terms of who we wanted to reach out to regarding the more localized and more specific parking and trash pickup changes that will be coming to them as a part of this project. So we posted up our apron posters, we went door knocking again between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive, and we also sent out physical snail mailers for our apartment complexes here. And these materials were also provided in both written English and Spanish. So we definitely wanted to talk with these residents and get feedback from them for our design. And the broader community meeting, which was held a few weeks after that, held at the Nuova High School. And there, we wanted to actually tailor our discussion to more overall. So this box just kind of goes to highlight our actual outreach efforts. We sent mailers out to about 2,000 addresses, again, with both written English and Spanish. And the discussion was a little bit different in the sense that we didn't feel like we needed to dwell too much on the parking and trash pickup changes here. But instead, we wanted to just inform and also have time for feedback about the overall project and that definitely the changes upcoming for that one mile, in terms of the 0.7 miles of Class Four facility, as well as the 0.3 miles of the Bike Boulevard that we're improving on. So Phase Two held at the Fiesta Gardens School for the local community meeting, this is basically what we heard. We had some residents come out and were largely in support of the project in terms of the upcoming safety enhancements for our pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as school student safety. Definitely, we heard feedback from residents living near the Nineteenth Avenue intersection. As you may know, the Arco could be, definitely is challenging in terms of the existing vehicle maneuvers that occur there. And we're a little disappointed to hear that this project would not be able to really accommodate for those movements. But we were definitely able to receive their feedback for a potential future project, as well as the removal of the southbound travel lane between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. So we definitely heard the residents' concerns about access to the west and east side homes for their driveways, as well as concerns about larger events being held at the event center, for example, impacting residents, as we are looking to constrict the roadway here for the project needs. And here is the broader community meeting that we held at the Nuova School. We had some good feedback, as well as back and forth with our community residents and, as well as a student, actually ended up coming out to also voice largely in support of the project, but also wanted to let us know that they desire more robust considerations for the Bike Boulevard treatment. And we also met with staff from the event center, and we'll be having more discussions with them to follow later this month. With that, we can kind of talk, go through quickly about the existing conditions on South Delaware Street to give you more context. Here's a photo of the South Delaware Street looking south at the Bermuda Drive intersection. We have two southbound travel lanes, two northbound travel lanes, two bike lanes headed north and south as well, on the east and west sides of the street. And we have also Samtrans bus route that runs on South Delaware Street, as well as the poor pavement conditions that were discussed earlier. Here's a good image, still looking south near the Pacific Boulevard intersection. And what we're looking to highlight here is, at least in the green arrow, we see an existing Class Two bike facility. So here, we're just looking to highlight the fact that in its existing form, South Delaware Street is not what we would consider a low-stress facility in terms of the level of traffic stress that riders definitely experience. So we have a Class Two bike facility directly adjacent to fast-moving, as well as a large number of cars that Delaware Street serves. We have drivers looking to access their homes, definitely creating potential conflict zones between turning vehicles at the, not only at the driveways, but also at our intersections as well. Parking turnover, we have residents getting out of vehicles, creating potential dooring risks for our cyclists, and these just general unpredictable conditions that cyclists have to navigate and maneuver around. Also wanted to highlight that these stressful conditions deter interested but concerned riders, and is something we're looking to improve on with this project. And here's another image near the Twenty-fifth Avenue intersection. We have bikes having to just weave in and out, and this is pretty typical of the existing bike infrastructure that's already out there. So with this project, we're looking to eliminate the need for these types of bike weaving movements, not only here, but in other places, to improve safety by engineering design means and simply just reconfiguring the existing bike lanes. So with that, we can kind of talk more about the corridor improvements that we are implementing with this project. Here's just a slide that you've seen before. So I'll be kind of defining the protected bikeway, as well as the Bike Boulevard in the next slide. So the separated bike lanes, or protected bike lane, or Class Four facility, is basically a designated lane separated from vehicles by a buffer that has a vertical protection. It provides that low-stress facility even on roads like South Delaware Street, because our cyclists, as you'll soon see, are separated from vehicular traffic. So I'll show you a few series of images, just depicting typical implementation of a Class Four facility. So here, we can see the separation is that low-profile concrete curb. Here, we see a K-71 implementation. So this is pretty typical for what you'll see for a standard Class Four implementation. We have parked vehicles actually providing the separation needed and the vertical protection for our cyclists here. And here, we have a two-way cycle track with low-profile concrete curbs again, providing that physical protection. And here, we actually have a race cycle track at the level of a sidewalk. And the Bike Boulevard for our 0.3 miles of implementation for the project, where bikes are expected to share lanes with vehicular traffic. It includes traffic calming treatments, and that is necessary to ensure that low-stress facility by lowering speeds and volumes of our vehicles. So here, we have a few series of images for the Bike Boulevard. This is actually at the Twenty-eighth Avenue West of El Camino for the Bike Boulevard treatment there, and as well as another image for a Bike Boulevard. So with that, we can kind of move along to our actual corridor improvements. So the Class Four facility, we're looking to install largely between Bermuda Drive to about East Twenty-eighth Avenue. And as you saw in the previous slide, we have the K-71 bollards that we'll be installing for much of the project. It's quite durable and standard for Class Four implementations here in the peninsula, and really in the state. We did not consider concrete, those low-profile concrete as an option due to cost impacts for the project, as well as our desire to implement this project sooner. The use of robust, quick-build materials to deliver on the project is crucial in the sense that we're looking to deliver this project in a timely manner, as well as just in general consideration that it is that backbone network connecting to other future projects. Zooming in a little bit, we're at the Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive segment, kind of shown on the image to your right, we have the parking-protected Class Four bikeway design. So this is primarily also where our San Mateo residents are expected to see changes to parking and trash handling. So this is actually only on the east side of South Delaware Street, so for northbound bikes. And so we have parked vehicles providing that physical separation. And then we have the bike buffer about three feet wide with vertical delineators, and then cyclists are able to kind of ride more safely next to the curb in this configuration. I wanted to talk briefly about the narrowing of vehicle travel lanes, and we're showing an example between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive, but it's really applicable for the entire Class Four facility. The existing curb-to-curb width was not sufficient for all the bike infrastructure, as well as parking that we wanted to implement. Therefore, certain vehicle lanes needed to be narrowed. This provides a side benefit in the sense that vehicles naturally tend to drive slower as their peripheral field of vision is reduced, while they also perceive that they have less available room to actually drive on. Therefore, we expect that drivers in the post-project conditions actually drive more carefully and more attentively. Here, we see, and the existing conditions are on your left. We have a section showing one of the vehicle travel lanes being 11-foot wide, really all of them being 11-foot wide. And in the proposed conditions, we have a 10-foot travel lane, for example, between Bermuda to Saratoga. And also, as you may have already heard of, the reduction of a southbound vehicle travel lane between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. This is also related in the sense that we did not have enough available width with the narrowing of the vehicle lanes, for example. It was necessary to take a travel lane from Bermuda to Saratoga and redistribute the width of that vehicle travel lane to actually accommodate our bike facilities while retaining parking on the east side of this segment. I wanted to also note in those red arrows shown on your screen that the southbound left turn movement is now a left turn pocket. This was a conscious design decision that we had to make, as otherwise, vehicles wishing to continue southbound would have to merge in the short distance just south of this intersection. This also encourages drivers to make more predictable behaviors headed south for other road users as well, like our cyclists, as well as our drivers. And I want to note, this is the north end of the lane reduction, so we can move further south to highlight that. Moving further south, this is kind of centering around Pacific Boulevard. We still have the lane reduction here, obviously. And then we are showing the south part of that lane reduction. So you can see here that South Delaware Street opens back up to two travel lanes headed south after the Saratoga Drive intersection. All in all, it's about 900 feet of a single travel lane having to be reduced, which is a great example of our project opting to prioritize bike, as well as pedestrian safety, parking retention, over simple traffic operations. Kind of flipping the image, we have left going north here. So I just wanted to highlight that these localized changes between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive are being proposed on this segment, which is partly also why we held that local community meeting, as discussed prior during Phase Two of outreach efforts. We definitely acknowledge that there are localized challenges with respect to this 900-foot segment relative to the entire project, which is about 0.7 miles of Class Four implementations. So we are definitely having to play that balancing act with respect to our project goals. So we talked about the lane reduction from Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. We have the parking modifications on the east side that we'll talk about in the next slide, as well as the feedback we heard from our residents making left turns headed north, as well as left turns headed south. So this is definitely something we'll have to modify as we complete our design, as we, to be able to actually allow our residents, for example, to make these left turns. So it was definitely good to have our residents come out during the Phase Two outreach, and these are definitely items of note that we wanted to hear from our residents to be able to also deliver on our project while still gathering feedback from our residents. And here is basically just an image centered around the Pacific Boulevard intersection, where we're highlighting the parking-separated bikeway design that we showed you an image of just a few prior slides ago. Here, we can see that parking was effectively retained due to the taking away of that southbound vehicle travel lane. Only five spots are having to be impacted as a result of this design, with one of those parking spaces actually being related to the new state daylighting laws. So residents here will also have changed trash handling operations due to the repositioning of the bike lanes to the curb side. This is a common strategy in other agencies with similar designs, and the changes have been coordinated with Recology. And our residents are, we believe they're aware of the upcoming changes. From Twenty-eighth Avenue down to Pacific Boulevard, where Delaware becomes Pacific, we have the Bike Boulevard treatments. And here, we have a list of the improvements or traffic calming measures that we'll be considering as a part of the Bike Boulevard treatment. I am choosing to bolt the Twenty-eighth Avenue intersection, as we'll discuss more in the as we'll discuss more on that later, as we have a lot of changes kind of coming along with that intersection. And here, we can dive into the project-specific design for the bike and pedestrian improvements at the intersection level or at our intersections. We're installing an RFB at the Pacific Boulevard intersection, Pacific Boulevard between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. And of note is that there is enhanced safety in that pedestrians are expected to cross only three travel lanes due to that southbound travel lane reduction. Crosswalk striping enhancements. So this is really going in for the entire project, but I wanted to show you this image just to kind of prove a point. Here we have existing conditions. And in the future conditions, we will be installing actually continental high-visibility crosswalks treatment, crosswalk enhancements or treatments for the entire project. So here we have a list just showing where exactly we're installing them. We expect that there will be enhanced visibility for our pedestrians as these have definitely been proven in studies to reduce pedestrian injury crashes up to 40%. And relatedly, we are having to do curb ramp treatments as we are repaving a portion of Delaware Street, so we also have that listed as well, to satisfy ADA requirements. And in terms of the intersection improvements for our bikes, we have a bike traffic signal. So if you're not already familiar with a bike traffic signal, it's kind of shown to the image to your left. They're basically just specialized lights designed to help cyclists safely navigate intersections. Currently, as shown in existing conditions, bikes, as we've shown you before, our bikes have to weave in and out and negotiate with traffic to head straight on Delaware. We eliminate that and make it more comfortable for our bikes to navigate intersections by installing our bike traffic signals. So bikes get their own dedicated green time, yellow time, and then after that, vehicles can be able to make their right turns on red. So relatedly, we're also having to restrict right turns on red because of that at certain intersections. And lastly, I wanted to talk briefly about the level service at our intersections that will definitely be, that we look to analyze as a part of this project as we are adding certain movements such as the new bike phase as a part of this new northbound bike phase. So here we see that in the existing conditions for this intersection, that the level service was a B in existing conditions, and the level service actually dropped down from a B to a C. So we expect, we definitely considered this in our design, and we were able to see that the drop-down from a B to a C is acceptable in the sense that traffic flow through the intersection is stable with the additional minor delays largely being from the addition of the bike movement or phase. In terms of the overall project benefits for our bikes, we believe that they are worth it in the sense that we're adhering to our project goal for improving safety for all modes of travel, while being able to get our bikes safely through, safely across Saratoga Drive intersection here. And at the same intersection, we're actually adding another southbound left turn here. This was something we considered due to heavy traffic experience on South Delaware Street on event days helped by the County Event Center. So these heavy traffic event days, we've been told, occur typically about four to five times a year, typically on Fridays or weekends. We definitely have a good relationship with the event center, and we'll continue to coordinate with them for these events by modifying the timing of the signals on those heavy traffic days. We wanted to also confirm that the two southbound left-turn lanes are not needed all the time. All the same, we wanted to make sure that we're accommodating the traffic during those heavy traffic days. We definitely heard the possibility of making this, so I've kind of boxed a different left-turn lane on your screens, of making that outer or the number-two left-turn lane into a shared left-through lane. There are certain challenges with that in the sense that we'll need to modify our proposed signal operations here more significantly if we want to desire to do so, and it would potentially actually result in even more delay here. So one goal of being able to, with one goal being able to seek to actually minimize traffic impacts, the proposal to change the operation in this manner did not align with our goal. I just wanted to also quickly note that between about Saratoga Drive down to 28th Avenue, we did talk with event center staff regarding the frontage improvements there, as well as our bike crossings for our Class IV facility just going on the east side of South Delaware Street. So we did have some good conversation with them already, just confirming with them which driveways, for example, are being used and for what purpose. But we'll definitely look to coordinate that meeting with the event center board to be able to give them a more comprehensive run-through of our project design. And here we have another bike traffic signal being installed at the 25th Avenue intersection. Again, they're basically just specialized lights for our bikes to be able to navigate through. And here we have that consideration being for the southbound bike movement. And we're also restricting right turns on red here as well. And I also wanted to take a quick moment to note that the benefit of having 25th Avenue, as well as the Saratoga Drive intersection be signaledized is that, especially for the Saratoga Drive intersection, is that we can modify the timings of these even in post-project conditions. So one thing that we'll be doing after we install the project and are able to just see the traffic flows for our vehicles, for our bikes, as well as our pedestrians, is that we can monitor them and make changes as necessary to be able to accommodate maybe heavier traffic than we had certainly analyzed for. So I did note earlier that special attention was being given to the intersection at the 28th Avenue intersection. So the work being proposed here is to actually intentionally prioritize other non-vehicular modes of travel. And why this is, is because it provides access to shops and businesses south on Delaware Street, as well as Bay Meadows Park, Nueva School, and other major transit destinations like Caltrain, as well as El Camino Real. I definitely wanted to highlight the fact that this intersection is really crucial for the project, as it is that transition from the Class IV facility to our Bike Boulevard. And exactly how we intend to make that change, both through engineering means as well as operational matters, are definitely crucial as we wanted to use our project design to respond to certain complaints and concerns that we heard from our residents, both in Phase One and as well as Phase Two outreach, as well as how in the post-project conditions, we definitely want to enhance safety and prioritize movements for our pedestrians and bikes at this intersection. So here we have a few images showing the intersection. So this is looking kind of northeast at the intersection. So we have on your left, we have the Roblox building over there. We have an existing multifamily complex to the northeast corner. We have Nueva School kind of pictured over here, and just to the right of that is Bay Meadows, as well as 28th Avenue kind of being that northernmost border of the Bay Meadows Development. And here is an image looking south with more just office space, as well as kind of on your left of your screen, we see the eventual full build-out of the Bay Meadows Development. So we can expect to see that there will be even more bike, as well as pedestrian activity at this intersection, as well as on South Delaware Street. So again, just looking to really acknowledge that with our project design here, as well as our operational implementations here. So with that, we can kind of walk you through some of the more specific project details being considered here for the 28th Avenue intersection. We're installing a pedestrian scramble, which is largely, which the pedestrian scramble is largely the factor for the additional delay being experienced here. So I know I'm not showing it on your screens, but the existing level of service here for this intersection is actually a C, and it drops onto a D. And that's very intentional, as we're giving, we're allotting a lot of time for our pedestrians to be able to cross not only in any direction they want, but definitely that diagonal direction. So here we're looking to prioritize our pedestrians with this movement. And related to that, we have to restrict right turns on red for all right turns for our vehicles as we are implementing our pedestrian scramble. We have central line hardening being proposed for the south approach at the intersection or to the right of your image. And this is also good in the sense that when vehicles kind of head southbound at this intersection, they also see that perceived narrowing for the southbound traffic, which would help to calm traffic in this area, but also serve as the gateway for our Bike Boulevard to kind of let our drivers know that they're entering a space where there's a lot of pedestrians, and there would definitely be bikes traveling in the same lane as them. We're looking to enhance cyclists' left turns at this intersection, headed north and south, as well as a curb extension to kind of tighten up things at that north approach, as well as reduce the crossing distance required for our pedestrians. And for these speed tables, as well as a race crosswalk, those will be installed at the project's south limits or Pacific Boulevard. You can kind of think of it as a speed bump, as well as a crosswalk combo. And it also serves to actually raise our pedestrians up by a few inches and make them more visible. And with this being also the south limits of our project, we understand that this would be the south kind of gateway for our Bike Boulevard to kind of let vehicles know that this area is a little different, and that we have these traffic calming measures in place to just let drivers know that they're sharing a space with other users. So in summary, so tonight, we kind of presented a carefully balanced project that not only looks to align with the city's general plan, as well as council priorities number 24 and number 37, but also a project that seeks to deliver on a highly prioritized project as designated by our bike master plan. The project seeks to enhance bike and pedestrian safety while considering needs of the community, which we gather feedback from in two different outreach phases. Although we will remove one vehicle lane and four parking spots along a 900-foot stretch between Bermuda and Saratoga Drives, the ultimate project benefits include .7 miles of protected bike lanes and .3 miles of bicycle Boulevard treatments. This project not only improves safety and connectivity locally, but also serves as a key link to existing and future citywide bike infrastructure. We have thoughtfully minimized traffic and parking impacts to prioritize safety and accessibility for all road users. Ultimately, we expect that these improvements aim to create a more sustainable, equitable, and active Semitale.
Thank you for a very thorough presentation. We will now open it up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on public comment on item 13? Now would be the time to do so. Mr. Clerk, do we have requests for public comment?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. In chambers, we have received some requests to speak. If you have not provided me with a request-to-speak slip and you wish to speak on this item, please do so at this time. We'll give you just a few moments to do so. In our virtual environment, if you plan to speak on this item, please raise your hand now and keep your hand raised. We will be announcing the name of our final speaker. Mayor Newsom, that's a total of 15 requests to speak on this item, including both virtual and, thank you, virtual and in-person. Per council adopted rules and procedures, that'll be two minutes per speaker. And we'll start with our in-house, in-chambers requests to speak. And to ensure we get through all of our comments efficiently, when I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that'll help us greatly. So thank you in advance for your cooperation there. So we'll tick our in-person speakers first. Our first three speakers will be Kevin Simpson, followed by Dana Storer and Allison McQueen.
Thanks, Mayor, and council members, and city clerk and staff. That was a really great presentation. I just really want to, in my two minutes, make three points. The first thing is, if you build it, they will come. So often, you're called upon to listen to varying viewpoints about things. Those viewpoints shift over time. And while I'm often here complaining about outreach, no matter how much outreach you do, you can't find the people always who will find the resource or facility that you provide. A really good example is the Humboldt bike lanes, not to beat a dead horse, but that's a terrible analogy, but not to raise maybe a sore subject. But I'm seeing, out in front of my house, the usage of those Humboldt bike lanes change by the day. I'm seeing workers from the neighborhood use it. So the outreach that the city staff did probably doesn't really reflect the full demand for these bike lanes. So that's my first thing. The second thing is, this is enshrined in 2040. You saw a really cogent and succinct slide that said, this hits so many different points of 2040, which we spent months and weeks and more than a year considering, and that was enshrined in our city's goals through the next 15 years. If we don't start making the effort to achieve these goals, project by project, day by day, year by year, month by month, we will never reach our objectives. Finally, I want to speak up for young people. This touches schools, this touches neighborhoods, this touches parks, this touches transit. The young people are crying out for much more resources for both environmental and active transportation. So I encourage you to go ahead with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next three speakers will be Dana Storer, followed by Allison McQueen and Mike Swire.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, Honorable Counsel, City Manager Kajikiyan, and city staff. My name is Dana Storer. I am the CEO of the San Mateo County Event Center. And I appreciate the opportunity to share our concerns regarding the proposed narrowing of Delaware between 92 and Saratoga. As the county's emergency response center for the county in particular, because we reside in the city of San Mateo, as well as being one of the largest Bay Area event venues, maintaining robust and accessible traffic corridors is really essential. Narrowing southbound Delaware significantly would impede the flow of traffic even with the two additional left-turn lanes onto Saratoga and provide undue burden to the residents on the other side of the event center from Hillsdale to the 1346 Saratoga Drive entrance. We tend to split traffic when we have large events so that neither neighborhood is overly impacted to the best of our ability. Most importantly, though, it would compromise emergency ingress and egress. If we are to serve as a mass evacuation site or have to serve as a mass vaccination center, we would be impeded by the ability of emergency services to access the event center. We understand and desire the improvement of cyclist infrastructure and support sustainable transportation. However, we urge the council to consider an alternative that would better balance the needs. Converting Pacific to one way, dedicating a second lane so that the bicyclists could reroute around traffic and still be safe is the preferable option of the event center. This approach creates a safer and more defined bike route. Further, I would just like to add, I'm a little concerned because the event center was never informed of this until recently.
Thank you, Dana.
So we didn't have voice to provide until now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next three speakers will be Allison McQueen, followed by Mike Swire and Kai.
Thanks, DBW, for the presentation. I'll be biking to the county fair, and I think other people are going to make that choice as well. So I think we really need to consider that. If you build it, people will use it, as Kevin just said. So the first protected bike lanes in California were installed in Davis in 1967. Here we are 58 years later, and San Mateo can get its first protected bike lane on a city street. Repeated studies show that adding a protected bike lane to a road improves safety for all road users, drivers, walkers, and bikers, reduces all collisions and injuries by 30 to 50%. As a city, we're falling behind our peers on bicycle infrastructure. Burlingame has protected bike lanes, Belmont has protected bike lanes, Daly City has protected bike lanes, South City has protected bike lanes, Affen Bay, East Palo Alto, Redwood City, San Bruno, and Menlo Park. Let's add San Mateo to the list. The protected bike lane in this project is a very important part of San Mateo and will provide safe bicycle access to the county event center. Count me in, I'll be biking there. Hillsdale Caltrain Station, the busiest station in San Mateo, the future site of College Park and the Nueva School, Bay Meadows Park, which is extremely busy with AYSO soccer during the week, on the weekends. And this is an area with a parking permit program, and we can reduce the need for parking with safe walking and biking options to Bay Meadows Park, and also workplaces in this area, and the upcoming redevelopment of Hillsdale Mall. If you want to reduce greenhouse gases, reduce traffic congestion, create connections to transit, and enable safer routes to school and work, please approve this project.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Mike- Our next three speakers will be Mike Swire, followed by Kai and Karvin Dasanyaki.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newsom and members of the council. I live in Bay Meadows. I actually biked on Delaware to get here tonight. I want to thank Bethany and Sang. I think you guys did a great job on this project, even though it does compromise some elements of safety. I think on a whole, it's really good. I also want to mention that I think the outreach program was absolutely outstanding. I saw multiple placards. I attended two meetings myself and believe that everybody was well-informed of it. I'm glad that safety is the number one priority, and we're going to work around that. At one of the meetings at Nueva, we heard from a student whose friend was hit at the 28th Avenue intersection. And that community, I think, has 70% of kids not driving to school. So if we want to keep that and improve that, we really need to keep making those improvements. As Allison said, this is a Class 4 bike lane, the first one, for the most part, in the city. This is what is good. On Humboldt, we got Class 2 bike lanes, which is basically just paint and separation. So when we compromise there, this is actually what we should be working towards. It does require the most room. That's why on Humboldt, we only lost one lane of parking as opposed to two. One thing I want to point out is that the delays, which I think were only a couple of seconds, were for peak travel only. So you're talking about, what, two hours maybe in the morning, two in the afternoon? Times five days, that's what, probably less than 10% of the overall week? I do not endorse the Pacific change. I don't think, one, it provides access to Fiesta Gardens, two, there's a lot of traffic heading to 92 there, and finally, if you want to get back to the Delaware bike lanes, you will require a left turn, which for cyclists is very, very difficult. And while I empathize with the event center, the event center was confirmed at the last meeting that there's only four major events at the event center per year. There are a bunch of smaller events, but when we think this massive traffic jam, that's only four times a year. I just can't imagine how we would compromise safety because we're worried about more people driving four days a year. We have a great Caltrain station right there. That's how people should go. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Kai, followed by Karvin and Phil King.
Hey, good evening, city staff and council members for working on this project. My name is Kai. I live on Addison Street. And I back to downtown on Delaware weekly with my wife and son, but we usually turn left and we go on to Palm Avenue because traffic is slower there. So a protected bike lane will mean a great deal to us. Just this Sunday, I took the train to SF with my son, and we bike on 17th Street, protected bike lane to Mission Dolores Park. We had a good time there. I taste what it's like to be riding on the protected bike lanes. It's busy, but feels safe. So I think there are plenty of space on Delaware to accommodate both driving and cycling. And we have the city, we have the mostly flat land and mild weather, and we have event centers, schools, and offices on the street. I think the bike lane will be a win-win. And it also hit our goals in the general plan. I'd like to ask the city council to approve this project and also work on other pedestrian safety and traffic calming measures. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Karvin, followed by Phil King and Anna Lieb.
Greetings, council members and city staff. I'm a resident of Redwood City, and I work in San Mateo. I'm here to strongly support the Safe Routes to School Delaware Street project. I ride my bike as part of my commute from Hillsdale Caltrain every weekday to near Bridgepoint Center, where my work is. Although this project is branded as a Safe Routes to School initiative, I want to highlight that this route is not just for students going to schools in the area, but for many other people, both pedestrians and cyclists. Even though my 15-minute bike commute involves two bridge crossings and a busy section of 19th Ave, Delaware Street in its current form is the most dangerous and intimidating section for me. A couple times a month on my commute, I have to exit the bike lane and enter busy commuter traffic lanes where cars are going, sometimes 35, 40 miles an hour, to navigate around a stopped vehicle. Like today, it was a UPS van. I approach each of these situations with a certain cool to ensure my safety, but sometimes I have a close call. Like a couple weeks ago, I was almost hit by a small pickup that took a sharp right turn when I was biking right next to them in the bike lane. Based on my understanding of the proposed design, my safety will be vastly improved with far more space between cars and cyclists and safer pedestrian crossings. But this is not just about young adult men like me. This is about the many other people that use Delaware Street, whether it's commuters taking it by bike, bus, or car, or residents that are also taking it to go to Hillsdale or Bridgepoint, or kids that take it to go to schools. I encourage the city council to support this project, and I look forward to when this project is fully implemented and I can ride San Mateo's first Class 4 protected bike lanes every weekday. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Phil King, followed by Anna Lieb. And our final speaker in person will be Leo Stoll.
Good evening, city council, mayor. Thanks for having us. This is my daughter Emerson. She's a student currently at College Park Elementary on the north end of town. You can wave hi if you want. Say hi. So we ride to school, on average, probably only about once or twice a week when it's cold, and getting a lot more frequent now that the weather is becoming more beautiful. With the school moving to Fiesta Gardens neighborhood next year, we're going to have a straight shot from near 25th Ave, where we live, across El Camino and up south Delaware to get to school, and we are psyched. It means we'll probably be biking four or five days a week with a little bit less time out in the weather. And I'm hoping, so Emerson's in second grade right now, I'm hoping she'll actually be riding a bike behind me on the way over in the coming years, before she gets out of elementary school, certainly, which is pretty exciting, I think. So I've made comments at a couple of the other meetings. You guys, I know, Mayor Newsom, you've heard me. This route is critical, and it is extremely critical that it stays on South Delaware to get the full length there. Diverting off onto Pacific, I'm very familiar with the area. I actually lived in Ironwood Townhomes for, I think, about 12 years, and biked frequently from there as well. That route is circuitous and would take us actually away from the safe routes to school that we're going to rely on. And so speaking of that, there's well over 1,000 students at either ends of these lanes that we're talking about, between the Nueva School and the current Fiesta Gardens School. Those kids fully deserve to have a safe way to get from neighborhoods in Bay Meadows or closer to downtown, all the way to their schools. I'm excited to see it coming and looking forward to it and really hope that it happens. It's urgent, too. There's a lot more parents biking all the way across town. One of my fellow parents had to leave early because his kid's bedtime was coming up, but they bike all the way across town now to College Park. They're excited to use it. About a dozen other parents looking to go, too. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Anna Lieb, followed by Leo Stoll.
Hi, thanks again. I've already spoken generally about my support for biking. I think this route, I agree, is really critical for the city. It was part of my work commute. I took a bus from the San Mateo County Event Center. When I was pregnant last winter and spring, I declined to bike to the bus, and I had to start driving because I didn't feel safe biking southbound and trying to navigate Palms versus Delaware versus these sort of haphazard pieces put together. I didn't feel safe enough to bike while pregnant. So if we want city streets that are accessible to everyone, I think this is really critical. I would be so excited to see kids biking to school, families biking together, fewer cars on the road. I think the concerns about the event center, although I acknowledge they are real. Having taken my daughter to the county fair at peak times last year, I realized that biking or taking the train would have been a much better experience for us, even with current traffic patterns. The traffic is really challenging. So I just wanted to thank the city planning department in particular for what feels like a really well-considered plan that really prioritizes safety and well-being of pedestrians and cyclists, and express my strong support of this plan and hope that we get it done quickly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Leo.
All right, thank you for, I wasn't planning on speaking, but thank you for letting me, because I turned it in late. So I think there's one detail that's also gone kind of not mentioned is the fact that San Mateo did recently start enforcing the two-hour parking in the Bay Meadows area, which actually, I go to Nueva, and I also live in that area. So that definitely impacted me. I was lucky enough to find a parking spot in my apartment complex, but I know a lot of people have to go out and move their cars during the day and all that. So I think if San Mateo is going to enforce that two-hour parking, might as well also build up the infrastructure for the alternatives, which is biking and walking, and increasing safety. I mean, definitely on Delaware, I see people speeding all the time. So thinning those lanes and making sure that people go slowly, something pretty important, so I got. But thanks so much, yeah.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, we will take Deborah. Please go ahead and unmute your mic, Deborah.
I just learned about this bike lane presentation earlier this morning. Despite having attended the Fiesta Gardens meeting and signing my name on the attendance list, the only reason I know about this meeting is because someone in city council texted me this morning. And I live in Ironwood, which will be heavily negatively impacted by the lane narrowing more than many other residents on the street. As a reminder, Delaware Street from Bermuda to Saratoga already have a bike lane and a sidewalk. Again, they have a bike lane and a sidewalk in this area where they're proposing to reduce it to one lane. This plan to reduce it to one lane is completely detached from reality. I've never seen a more confusing and chaotic traffic design in my life. It will cause even worse traffic bottlenecks all the way past Highway 92, especially on event center days. It will create more hazards for drivers, especially for those of us who live on this 900-foot section. It will also cause confusion to drivers going from two lanes to one lane to two over just 900 feet, ultimately leading to more traffic accidents. Importantly, it will prevent West Side residents from turning left onto northbound Delaware when leaving their homes or turning left into their driveway from northbound Delaware Street. As a reminder, those of us on the west side of South Delaware Street were not invited to any of the planning meetings. And that's referring to several hundred residents. I urge the city to cancel the lane removal altogether and instead spend the money on resolving the real safety hazards on South Delaware Street. Number one, the Arco Station traffic that causes daily near accidents. And number two, the myriad potholes on South Delaware Street, which have not been filled for as long as I can remember. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Gio Leani. Gio, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Leo, thanks for pushing forward this project. Please continue. Please resist opponents' requests to weaken the project. Lives are at stake. Students desire a safe route to schools, to every destination they go, all of us do. I'm tired of hearing that bike lanes are for rich, young tech bros. I'm an old fat dude with terrible knees and a bad back. I ride this route two to three times a week. It's awful. It could be so much better. As I noted before, we need complete cycle route, not short segments. This initial project is a core part of any connected system of cycle routes in San Mateo. With respect to emergency services and car loss concerns, LOS concerns, Delaware at 20th is less than 800 feet, less than a sixteenth of a mile from El Camino. At 25th Street, it's less than a tenth of a mile. You know, you're looking to go someplace fast? I think I got a street for you less than a tenth of a mile away. Ask you to remember, while a few folks are worried about a few seconds extra time, cyclists are being struck by cars, injured, and killed. What are you going to prioritize? A few seconds of time or folks' health? One small request. We keep talking about this as being a protected route. It mostly is, but there is a large stretch that's not. I really hope over time that you'll fix this. In particular, 28th Street, the apartment building. There's going to be a bus stop there. That bus stop is far north of the building. We really need flex posts between the bus stop and 28th. If you go and look at the Dib 94, Section 7.3.3, you'll see that you only need about 50 feet clearing without the flex posts. Please follow Dib 94, put the flex post between 28th Street and the entrance to the bus stop.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sho Chat. Sho Chat, please unmute your mic.
Thank you, city council and Public Works. I am a teacher at the Nueva School and a resident of San Mateo. Thank you, city council and Public Works. I am a teacher at the Nueva School and a resident of San Mateo. I commute to work on a bike, and many other teachers and students do as well. Please approve this project for our safety and the environment and common sense. I also want to say the bike boulevards with sharos do not keep bicyclists safe. So the bike lanes, especially the buffered ones, plus the lane narrowing, provide what we need. I look forward to not only Delaware being improved, but biking, also 25th and 28th that connect San Mateo to the Nueva School. I look forward to those being improved as well. It's 2025. It's five years after the 2020 Bike Master Plan was approved, and we have a lot more work to do. I want to finish by repeating what was said before. If you build it, bikers will come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Seema Patel. Seema, please unmute your mic. Seema, please go ahead and unmute your mic. We're not able to hear you at this time.
Hello, so sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. I currently serve on the planning commission, but I am speaking on my own behalf. I am so excited to see our first protected bike lanes in San Mateo. Recall that our 2025 community survey, More Bike Lanes, was the number four response when asked if you could change one thing to make San Mateo a better place to live, what would it be? From a safe routes to school standpoint, it's a little disappointing that these lanes directly connect to a private school but stop six blocks short of a public school. I hope that a robust bike boulevard on Bermuda with strong traffic calming measures can be implemented quickly to complete that last metaphorical mile. I personally always bike to events at the event center, like the county fair and the state gymnastics championships. There is no bicycle parking and infrastructure there. Perhaps with safe pedestrian and bicyclist infrastructure, more people would bike or walk from Caltrain to the event center, and that second lane wouldn't be necessary for those four big events per year. I'll also call out that the bike lanes on Delaware just north of this project, next to Sunny Bray Elementary School, are unusable as they overlap with the parking lane, and large trucks and SUVs that park in that lane block those lanes entirely. I myself was almost doored directly outside of Sunny Bray Elementary using those lanes. I hope that we can make these bicycle facilities adjacent to Sunny Bray Elementary more safe in the future so that students coming from North Central or Central to Sunny Bray Elementary or Fiesta Gardens Elementary have a safe route to school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Max Motner. Max, please go and unmute your mic.
Hey there. Am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Amazing, awesome. Hello, council. Thank you, staff, for this presentation. I think Sang has accomplished what he and Public Works set out to do, which is make proposed changes to Delaware to address the critical population of interested but deterred riders. I hope that the city approves these plans, supports these plans, seeks out the grant money that would make them real, and comes back and hardens these laters. The costs here are so marginal compared to other transportation infrastructure projects, and this type of low-car infrastructure encourages future lower costs on the city, lower cost burdens on the city. So to phrase that, building bike infrastructure saves the city money and us residents money, especially for parents who seek to free themselves from chauffeuring their kids to school. I want to reemphasize a few noteworthy details about the area that these walk-bike improvements would help serve besides the schools on the corridor. One is the connectivity to Hayward Park Caltrain via Pacific Boulevard. Whether putting bike infrastructure on Pacific Boulevard or not, it's a really helpful lower-traffic road. And the other really noteworthy thing on my mind is the Concar Development Proposal, which is 450 or so units with its latest revision, which puts another 1,000 residents or so where the TJ Maxx and Ross currently exist. I also wanted to comment really briefly on the Emergency Response Center concerns that Dana of the County Event Center raised. We all may have seen the disastrous Pacific Palisades and Eaton Fires in Southern California earlier this year, where motor vehicle congestion created traffic deadlocks as those residents attempted to exit the neighborhoods and folks fled the fires on foot, and yes, on bicycle. Firefighters were impeded from reaching the most opportune sites to fight the fires, and they had to wait on bringing out bulldozers to clear deadlocked cars. So bike infrastructure is an incredible congestion solution, especially in responding to public emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Maria. Maria, please unmute your mic.
Hi, yes, the person who presented the slides just let people know here that we're all sharing the road with others. And so these are all pretty misleading comments because it's actually, what it seems to me, is to take over of streets by cyclists, very much like the failed project on California Drive and Burlingame, where we see the traffic congestion and cars lined up for over a mile. You know, all for what? For clearing the road, for all of... You know, all for what? For clearing the road for all of one and a half bicyclists? It just doesn't make any sense. So I just wouldn't want San Mateo to repeat that same mistake. And this project shouldn't be a prioritization for all Samitans. It's definitely not going to help the traffic congestion to narrow enclosed down streets to bicyclists. And also, you know, increasing bike lanes and squeezing out the freedom of movement for vehicles and the majority of working class Samitans who use roads to drive to and from work and back home is not helping anyone and is also quite frankly infringing on our rights to movement however we choose to. I feel the lady in pink who spoke twice wants congratulations for biking to and from the city council chambers and to the city county fair, but not everybody is able bodied to bike. Most people do not have the luxury of having their own schedule to bike around and who wants to be sweaty and tired before coming to work? I certainly cannot afford to do this before hospital shifts. And so many other taxpayer residents also cannot afford to lose time in their schedule on such prolonged commute pedaling to where they need to go. Additionally, riding a bike is always going to be a hazard. Plenty of cities with these bike lanes where they're simultaneously driving alongside traffic. There are so many fatalities and hospitalizations and I've seen helmets split in half in the hospitals. So firsthand, I don't think it's a good idea to push bikes in such close proximity to moving vehicles. Also, just in my opinion, putting a child in tow with you is careless, reckless, bordering on child endangerment. I don't think this should be encouraged or promoted. And this additionally doesn't have any benefits for those that cannot bike as a handicap.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be David Hunt. David, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Good evening. My name is David Hunt and I live in Hayward Park and my kids currently attend Fiesta Gardens. I'm speaking in support of the Delaware Safe Routes to School Project. This project is a critical step towards safer, more connected neighborhoods. Protected bike lanes make it safer for children and families to bike and walk to school and encourage healthier transportation for everyone. It's also what residents want and the only statistically significant citywide community opinion survey provide more bike lanes and improve public transit. Both ranked among the top five improvements that people ask for. This project supports both by creating safe, all ages access along Delaware. North of 28th, it strengthens connections to our Caltrain stations and helps more people bike to transit safely. It answers the community's calls for a more safe, accessible and sustainable city. But we need to finish the job. I wish these lanes had existed when my kids were attending Fiesta Gardens because the busiest and most dangerous part of our ride was Delaware and 19th. The current design stops just before it. We need to extend the protection all the way to 19th because stopping short creates an unsafe gap right where the most protection is needed. That being said, this will be our city's first truly protected bike infrastructure. So let's make it count. Build it right, build it fully and set a strong precedent. I urge you to move forward with the protected lanes in Delaware all the way to 19th. And I'll say briefly, the section north of 28th is a great design and I love the presentation tonight. South of 28th to Pacific is not all ages and all abilities low stress infrastructure and we should not be talking about it as a sufficient piece of infrastructure for the traffic volumes and speeds on that street. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Thank you all. Sorry. Thank you all for your public comments tonight. We will go ahead and close public comment and do questions, comments and feedback from the council. I am actually going to go first, which I rarely do because I've heard quite a bit of this from people in my district. Consider myself a pro bike person. I actually have biked this route a lot over the last 27 years. I can concur that it is an extremely dangerous corridor and it's frightening to ride on. That said, I've heard a lot from the community, especially over the last week. And I want to kind of go through concerns and some, and I have some, some positive thoughts too. It's not all good concerns. But starting out, I've heard several times it's referenced that we will only be losing five spots on the corridor between Saratoga and Bermuda. I was curious, do we have a number of how many spots we believe there are currently on the west side or east side of that street?
Believe it's something like 23 spots. We do have it here. 18 existing spots.
Okay. I've counted twice, three times in the last two weeks. It's generally between 23 and 25 people are parking there at night. So I don't know, I don't know, but I suspect we're going to be losing a little more than five. Hopefully it's not that many. If we take the correlation of 18 to 23, it still doesn't seem too bad, but still want to make sure we're keeping an eye on that. I've heard a lot from the community, particularly the residents of the 1990, 2000 Ironwood at 2032 and the Mode Apartments and Townhouses at Delaware and Pacific. I've talked to city staff about this. It does sound like while we have done outreach, which is positive, we, we may have missed some of them in the communication. And what I've heard is that they may have been left off the, off the mailing list. Alex, do you have any more detail on that that you can provide?
Bethany, you want to go ahead and?
Yeah. And I think we had outlined that, that the methodology which we use to pull the addresses had an issue that we identified today in response to your email. And it limited all of the responses that we could collect, all of the addresses that we could collect through that methodology to 2,000. So we had 2,000 specific addresses that we had sent out. We reran that and after we found that it's been corrected, it's actually closer to 4,000 residents in the area that we were looking to target. It was, it was not really discerning the way that it would select certain addresses. But we, what we did find is that there's maybe one or two residents in the 1900 and the 2000 South Delaware residences that didn't receive our second phase of outreach. We did do door knocking in 1990, South Delaware for the first phase, but the Ironwood residents did receive that outreach.
Okay. That's good. Although it is alarming, obviously, that almost half maybe didn't get one of the communications. But we feel confident that, do you know roughly how many units we're talking about? If we talk, I mean, I think 1990 and 2000 are 120 units total. Do you know how many residents there are in Ironwood and roughly, or how many units?
Unfortunately, no, I don't know.
Well, I think from what I've heard, there's been a lot of concern with particularly people in those buildings. Anything we do going forward, we want to make sure that we get into their mailing rooms and their kind of public access areas, put up signage, because that's something that residents have all said. The residents have also said that particularly in Mode and Ironwood, there are quite a few that speak Chinese or Mandarin dialect. So they've asked if we do more communication to them that we conclude a third language. We talked a little bit about alternatives and I do understand that the importance of of Delaware Street being such a main thoroughfare makes it really advantageous to having it be there. And I know we did talk a little bit about Pacific, for example, but we didn't talk about Palm or Palm in the B Street, which I do hear a lot of people say that they use more just because of the safety aspect. So I'm not saying that's one thing or the other, just something to look at. I did hear from Dana Store, our CEO of the Expo Center. I initially reached out to her about the pub meetings and while she did say in, in the community meeting that we were at, that she, she does really appreciate the relationship we have between the city and the Expo Center. She did feel as though they had not been notified about what was going on. And obviously that's a concern. She also said five to seven major events per year, not four, as was someone stated. And one of those events is, is almost three weeks long in duration. So it's not, it's not nothing, although it's definitely not every day. Don't usually do this, but I was writing about this over the weekend and had the fire chief happen to be in attendance where I was. And one of the concerns he said too, is to make sure that we, we have a main thoroughfare for fire trucks. Fire trucks and the ambulances use this corridor extensively. And so there is some concern if you remove the ability for them to be able to pass in one direction or the other. And that also kind of ties into something that a lot of the residents said who live on the west side, which I was referring to on South Delaware between Bermuda and Saratoga, excuse me. Those residents in particular were concerned, and I think we've said we're going to correct this, but the removal of, of the ability to turn right or left, you know, into the driveways is concerning. Particularly, and it also was exacerbated when the police, the fire chief rather, was talking about it saying, yeah, if you've narrowed it to only one lane, you're going to have to be able to have a fire truck or they're going to just have to drive right over things. So we don't want that. So I just want to make sure that as we look at this, that we're taking all those things into account. Something that would also be helpful, when we look at the illustrations in the video, which is great, the video is very helpful, to see the width of a bus in the bike, in, in, in the actual vehicle lanes. It seems as though, and maybe you guys can confirm this for me, on the northbound lanes, the, the right lane, which is closest to the sidewalk in the bike lane is narrower. Is that right? Or are they both equally wide?
Your question is in the northbound lanes closest to Bermuda?
Yeah. Well, the two, two northbound lanes between Saratoga and Bermuda, is one of the lanes narrower than the other?
Yes, one of them is 10 feet and one of them's 11 feet. And that was intentional. We made the 11 foot one on the outside because it was going to be adjacent to vehicles that were parked there. So we wanted to provide as much space as possible between the parked vehicles and the travel lane.
So the one closest to the bike lane is wider or narrower on the, on the inside, towards the sidewalk side?
In the northbound direction, it's actually a buffer. So there's parked vehicles, then a buffer, and then the bike lane is adjacent to the curb there. The vehicle lane that is adjacent to the parking is 11 feet wide there.
Okay. And how wide is the Samtrans bus by comparison?
I don't have the width of the Samtrans bus offhand.
Well, I mean, the, the concern is that they're going to have to build a stop and actually I'll come that up on my next one. So the bus stops, there are four of them in this corridor? Is that accurate?
I don't know if I have the count offhand.
Okay. Well, one of the questions was, and we watched this a little bit yesterday when we were observing. We were watching bus go south and if the bus doesn't have a pullout, which I don't see that it does in the diagrams, does that mean the bus stops? Everything stops?
That's correct. That is the direction that we've received from Samtrans, that that is their preference is to do in lane stops. What they have identified to us is that the most amount of delay that they are seeing in their bus routes is actually relating to those pullouts. And so their, their preference is to be doing their stops in lane. So yes, there is an implication for vehicles behind them, but generally they're very short stops.
Okay. Talked about the hard medians. We're going to address that and correct that. It'd be great to see what that looks like when it's done. Part of that also being the concern that, and we talked about this in some of the community meetings, there's no ability to make a U-turn. So if you have a hard lane, you don't have a way to, for example, if you're coming north and you want to pull into your driveway, you have no way to do that. So you have to go up and the intersection where it's, the first intersection where there is no sign that says no U-turn is 19th. But that would actually be making a U-turn into a one-way and you have the Arco traffic, which is horrendous. And so that's a concern. Okay, moving along. We did talk to about five residents, well, maybe four residents and, and two of them were biking. We asked them specifically how they felt about biking. It was a father and his son. They, they were concerned that even with the protected bike lane, they weren't sure they're going to feel safe. So I want to make sure that moving forward, that however we do this, there's a sense of safety. I mean, that's very important. There was some concern from the, the Fiesta Gardens Neighborhood Association about the already lack of parking particularly, particularly on Texas Way. A lot of people are parking on Texas Way and Bermuda because there's not enough parking already on that corridor of, of Delaware Street. So there's a concern about the impact of what happens when we remove, even if it's only 15 more spots, it means there's going to be 15 more cars in that neighborhood. Heard about the evacuation. That's great. Be great to get some data. So I know it's, it's hard because we have Fiesta Gardens currently there. We'll be having College Park switching locations, but it would be great to know some ridership data. And also for, for example, for Fiesta Gardens and soon to be eventually College Park's campus, it would be great to make sure that we have a good connectivity to these bike lanes. And looking at those raised, kind of quasi bump crosswalks, putting those, and I don't say this just with this, but with, in front of all schools would be really, really helpful and advantageous. I think of that as well on Sunny Bray on Delaware Street, which someone spoke about. Also heard some concern about the impact on the fact that we likely in the next 10 years are going to have 900 to 1,200 more units of housing in a very tight space. So that's Concar, most likely San Mateo Marriott and, and probably Bay Shore Commons. All will be adding a significant amount. So I want to make sure that as we're looking at data, we're considering what that looks like. And obviously, while we want to move forward and be progressive, I also want to make sure that we're not creating something that's going to be impacting residents greatly by the amount of congestion we're causing. Concern about the underpass under 92 and the dangerous intersection and area that is Arco. So I don't see that in this plan and maybe it's because it's a different phase, but I want to make sure that we're very thoughtful about what that looks like. Arco is, is a mess. Like it's, it's I guess the cheapest gas in the city. And so there's lines out the door. People pull in and out. They do crazy things. I see people make, make rights or lefts onto the one-way of 19th. It's, it's very scary. So just want to make sure that we're, we're building in and forward thinking, whatever this solution is, to how we're going to facilitate riding underneath 92 and connecting it to the Concar area. And I had one more and I lost it. Sorry. Okay, I have two more. The scramble that is going to be put in on 28th is very exciting to me. But last council meeting, we actually talked about the improvements or changes that'll be made in the underpass of 28th. So if initially we were told we weren't going to be losing lanes, but then it was corrected and told we might actually be losing lanes there on the, and I know this is a little off topic, sorry persona, but it does tie in directly. But I want to make sure that if we're removing lanes and then also adding additional stoppage time, which theoretically will be in the morning commute, that that, that's not going to continue to back up, for example, on El Camino Real. So just something I want to make sure we're aware of and putting thought into. And actually, my last one was raised crosswalks. I really like them. Like to see them not just here, but throughout the city and especially around schools. That was all my comments and feedback. Is there any questions you have about what I've suggested?
So Mayor Newsom, I just wanted to just jump in here and I just appreciate the feedback that you provided to city staff about community engagement. With that, you know, we, we'll take that back. But of course, I just want to remind the council this evening that this is another opportunity for engagement. There's no decision being made and just like you've provided your input, we'll take that into consideration overall. We will continue to do our best to try to engage the community and, you know, I appreciate you providing that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Okay. That's all I have. Who's next?
No one wants to go? I'm calling on the deputy mayor. Thanks.
Thank you through the mayor. Thank the mayor for his comprehensive comments. Clearly you've put a lot of time into this important thoroughfare in your area and neighborhood. And, and we've heard, I feel a lot of public comment that, and, and frankly, the, the presentation touched on a lot of things. I appreciated the presentation. So I will try not to repeat anything and everything. I did have some questions. I think I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss any large changes in the, I would like the current design versus maybe what was brought to the public last year. I, I watched, for example, the, the, the video that Sangichao made earlier. And I think when I took a look at the current design documents, I saw ADA curb enhancements. There were the changes to the parking and trash collection or bin placement that we saw in the presentation. And I was just curious if, if there were other maybe significant changes that I, I'm missing.
Yeah. Thank you for that comment, Councilmember Lauren. Yeah. In terms of how the design documents as presented on our website kind of evolved from that early conceptual design stage to what it is shown now, we essentially, in the background at least, we've worked with our design we've worked with our design consultant to take our initial design concepts to be able to make them ready to construct. And we took that basically substantially complete design and looked to make it more palatable for our residents to actually look at, which is likely the document that you saw. Some of the smaller things that we kind of changed was highlighting our intersectional operations analysis. So making some of those tables a little bit bigger, for example. And in terms of the actual design specific changes, for example, we got feedback from the Phase One of outreach for whether residents preferred the flexible delineators or the K71 bollards as presented here. But actually, in Phase One, we had a Survey Monkey website where residents were able to weigh in whether they prefer this current style, the K71 bollards, or a more cheaper Class One white flex post. So those are a little thinner, for example. So this is one example of a update that we actually presented, that we wanted folks to kind of see that we took their feedback. And we're looking to incorporate it as a part of our design. There were some other changes at our intersections. We wanted to highlight that we're adding specific bike signal movements for our northbound bike, for example, at the Saratoga Drive intersection, as well as the 25th Avenue for the southbound bike movement. And we also just added some more images, for example, at, for the high visibility crosswalks that are improving.
I think he's touched on a lot of the changes. I know that there was a handful of additional design changes, such as some additional centerline hardening on the southerly part of the project. And again, a lot of that was aimed at enhancing some of the bike boulevard facilities. We did do some data collection after our first phase of outreach. And we were trying to see if it was necessary for us to do additional enhancements along with the project and also considering what scope and funding we had with that. And we decided not to at this time, except for this inclusion of additional centerline hardening devices, which are relatively low cost. But we do intend to come back after the project to reassess what existing speeds and volumes are in that area. But those are some of the key changes.
Okay, thank you. And just to stay on that for just another moment, to make sure I know what, to make sure I'm understanding, did, did I hear that we, we will not be going ahead at this time on the design with the bollards?
No, sorry if that was, if that was the interpretation there. Apologies for the way, for anyway. We will be including the more robust bollards, the beefier bollards, not the smaller, what we call candlestick type bollards. And these ones will be the green in nature, the ones that you've kind of seen in the images in the presentation.
Oh, very good. Thank you for that clarification. Can we talk a little bit about how much this is costing us at the city? And, and how much of the funding for this project is coming from grant money or other sources?
Certainly. So the project cost overall is estimated to be about $3.6 million. That does include the bike facilities, the signal improvements that we're proposing is along with the paving of the corridor, which is a pretty significant chunk of it. $1.6 million of that is coming from our state-funded Active Transportation Program. So, so it's a pretty decent chunk of that total cost.
Thank you. I believe I heard in the presentation that there's a possibility of monitoring some of the signaling at the intersections on which we're designing improvements. I think particularly a 25th and Delaware was, was pointed out. Would that potentially be possible at each of these intersections within the project scope? I'm thinking particularly Saratoga and Delaware and 28th. And if it seemed to cause, if this were implemented as designed and, and we got the sense that there seemed to be an outsized traffic issue, could we consider tweaks?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's one of the benefits of having a lot of the, the intersections along the corridor be signalized is that there's a lot of flexibility with signals generally in the way that we provide certain timing or the way that we sequence certain lights to come up. There are some limitations to that, but there is a lot of flexibility that we have in that realm as opposed to something like an always stop, where there's very, very little flexibility. So yes, and we do intend to do some of that after analysis. We, you know, do our modeling beforehand. That is the best sort of information that we have available and the best tool that we have to be able to do that. But certainly is no substitute for coming back out and reassessing, refining as needed.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. I will try to be brief. But I, I am in support of this project. And as, as I noted, I, I think the even, you know, a number of public comments and the presentation highlighted a number of reasons why this is a huge project for the city of San Mateo. It touches on multiple general plan policies and actions and multiple city council priorities. This is a high priority project in the Bike Master Plan. It's on the Rapid Implementation Network. And that's huge because, as was noted, it is 2025. This Bicycle Master Plan update came in 2020. That was an update of a Bicycle Master Plan that was approved in 2011. And the Rapid Implementation Network was, I think, a big piece of what I feel like we're, we're, we're trying to accomplish, which is, you know, can't, what would it take to get a minimum viable product, if you will, of a network, a multimodal network in our city that allowed more than just some, you know, adventurous folks who, you know, are willing to be early adopters or something, but people with families, people who, you know, are concerned for their safety of themselves and their children to, to try something other than driving around our city. The Rapid Implementation Network was, was, you know, keyed on in the, in the Bike Master Plan update to achieve that within the first five years of the plan's implementation with quick build projects to, to get us there. And so this is a huge piece of that network. I, I will just, I mean, like, we, we saw through the presentation, this is a big connector of transit-oriented development areas, of two cow train stations, of two schools, the, the event center itself, which I currently bike to, and, and so much more. But of also of future bike projects that are already in progress in our city, like the 19th Avenue Mobility Hub and the 28th Avenue Gap Project. So it, it doesn't just, I mean, like, it, it connects so much. It connects us to these important parts of Delaware within our city, but also through 19th, a large other, you know, parts of our city. We can go into District Four or, you know, onward. And, and 28th, you can go through District Five and see me. I appreciate the, the, the concerns brought by some in the neighborhoods and particularly from Dana Store, from the event center. I, you know, I think with regard to concerns about a, a loss of a, of five parking spaces and in some level of service, I, I feel that it's a relatively minor cost for a potentially large benefit to a lot of folks. And as we heard from staff and in my question about tweaks, I think if, if that turned out to not be the case for some reason, if the ratio weren't quite what we predicted, we, we have the opportunity to change that to make it better and work. So I am comfortable on those. I, I think, you know, I appreciate the mayor speaking with the fire chief. And of course, we all want to make sure that this is, remains in a thoroughfare that can be accessed properly by emergency vehicles. So I, I would just encourage continued dialogue. If, you know, if staff is comfortable with the plan's ability to maintain that, then, then I think we are okay. And I would continue to support this. I, I think I'll stop there. Well, except to say, of course, that I'm really excited about this project. It's, it's, it is our first protected bike lane. And as people mentioned, there are protected bike lanes in other cities. And I, I'm really looking forward to this opportunity. I, 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 this is, it's, it's of course about so much, right? It's about increasing bike ped safety. It's about increasing multimodal access to our schools, to broader parts of San Mateo. It's about reducing greenhouse gas emissions and increasing efficiency and capacity of our travel routes in a multimodal way to meet the needs of the growth anticipated in our general plan, which we did adopt. I, I do feel that if this council were able to adopt the growth goals of General Plan 2040, we need to be able to back that up with the transportation and circulation imperatives that would allow that to succeed. Okay. I see a lot of people looking at me. So those are my comments for now.
I would. Well, first off, besides saying thank you for, wow, what a presentation. I mean, I, I really had to every once in a while, take a deep breath to keep going with you. So I can only imagine what it took to do it. Second comment, I'm just very excited at how excited the deputy mayor is. And I appreciate that. I mean, I, I really appreciate that. And yes, I am also supportive of this project. I, you know, I, I think a lot of the concerns and questions people have raised, you've taken, I would love to hear you come back as you go through the project and answer it when you have more of an opportunity. One thing, and I do too, also love raised crosswalks all throughout the city. So there. But, and I appreciate the, the, the quick build, the flexibility. You're, you're going to be able to go out and do things and find out pretty quickly whether they're going to work or not. And I think that's the only thing that we can say is real because everything keeps changing. So you, you plan for the best of your ability, but most of it will work and some of it you'll go, oh, my God, we don't want to do that. So thank you for really putting the quick build in front. And there was a question, I mean, I guess I would also say that while I'm sure you will keep it front of mind, the emergency precautions that are needed, particularly around the event center, that working very closely with them and with SMC Fire, they're the ones who are going to be able to give you the, the details as you go on. And I know you've already said you're going to work with them very closely. So I really support that. And the one thing I, I just had a question about, there was an email that came in lately this afternoon from Josh Mello, who said he was a former transportation planner for Atlanta and Palo Alto. And he questioned the centerline hardening on the Bike Boulevard portion between East 28th and Pacific Boulevard and suggested it be changed to a dashed yellow centerline because he said a bicycle on a single lane with no bike lanes, it's uncomfortably followed by a car that can't safely pass you. Single dashed yellow centerlines would allow motors to pass slowly moving bicyclists when it is safe. And that seemed like a valid comment to me. But then I saw that you were promoting the hardened centerlines. So I'm just interested in your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think just for clarity, we're not promoting or we're not proposing to do the hardened centerline throughout the entire corridor. We're solely doing it at the intersections. We're finding that the intersections are where folks are seeing sort of a perceived openness. And so by putting in that hardened centerline, it is typically used for left turns to make more deliberate sort of right angles through the crosswalks. But we're also using it as a mechanism to help reduce the perceived width of the lanes. And we're thinking that that's going to be something that helps with traffic calming through the area. So in the middle sections where folks may be passing, as is suggested, those areas are still going to retain the existing striping. There's no hardened features in those areas. So it is still possible for, for maneuverability across the centerline.
Great. And then my, thank you very much for clarifying that. My last comment is just data, 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 as I'm sure you want to. So I look forward to hearing future reports and I hope they are all very positive. Thank you.
So thank you for a fantastic presentation. I think that this is a necessary and important project. And I truly appreciate your outreach and real efforts to appease neighbor, neighbors with the diversity of opinions on this project. This is a really important thoroughfare that I drive pretty frequently because I have to pass this to get from my home in North Central to my parents' house in Lori Meadows. So I'm, I'm doing it a couple, yeah, I know it very well. So I think I'm excited about, probably not as excited as the deputy mayor, but I'm very excited about this project. It's fantastic. But just on a larger, sort of a larger scope, and I want to maybe direct this to City Manager Kajikian or Public Works Director Fabry. I'm really, I'm, again, I'm still new on council. So in some ways, I'm still learning how to council member. But I'm a little frustrated at how sort of these bike lane projects are coming a bit piecemeal to us. And I'm wondering, like, it's frustrating for residents and frustrating for council and probably frustrating for staff as well. So I'm wondering if maybe on sort of a larger theme, is it possible to ask staff to come back with a list of bike lane projects that do not remove parking or eliminate traffic lanes for council to prioritize?
So as city staff presented this evening, that what we're going off of is previous council direction, which has been to, one is General Plan 2040, which the previous council adopted and is what is the vision of what we're moving forward with. Secondly, is we have the Bike Master Plan that was adopted that you heard this evening back in 2020. And this is one of the high-list projects that were on there. Most of the, I would say, and I would probably defer to staff to answer this question for me, but I would think that bike lane projects that, I, I'm assuming bike lane projects that have any reduction in parking or have a reduction of a lane probably is a big safety issue. And it's probably in our high projects. I'm seeing, Bethany, can you correct me? If I, that's correct? Okay, I'm hearing from Steph that that's correct. If we were going to look at, you know, moving, you know, changing or pivoting from the policy of the highs and just focusing on the medium to the lows, we would need to, you know, I'd have to get direction from the council because what I have is existing direction, what we're going off of from the General Plan 2040 document and the Bike Master Plan, something we could probably go back and talk internally with staff. And I'd have to report back to the council of that overall approach. But once again, we're looking at safety as the number one issue that we are tackling these projects. That's how we're moving forward with.
And, and that's a fair assessment. I appreciate your input on that. But we are a new council. And also, we have a $15 million deficit. So we really do need to prioritize sort of how we approach these projects. And I think some of these projects are quite divisive. And so I'm just trying to figure out if there's some way we can streamline it.
Our Public Works Director wants to weigh in.
Yeah, I'll just add through the mayor that in addition to, you know, doing some of these bigger projects where we're seeking funding, you know, a lot of our projects are grant funded, given that we do have limited dedicated transportation resources. So we do have projects like this that are dedicated, larger projects that we're working on. But we also, through our pavement maintenance program, whenever we have the opportunity, we're implementing projects from the bike plan, including striping. Those are the projects that often are not impactful in terms of travel lane and, and parking loss. But we're taking advantage of that whenever we can through our pavement maintenance program. So we are advancing those projects. They aren't the projects that garner this level of interest, but they're the projects that happen when we get those done as we're going through the process. So, and we will be coming back with a transportation update to the council on June 2nd. We'll provide, you know, greater updates in terms of where we are in terms of implementing the Bike Master Plan.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Director Fabry.
I was going to say, that's the opportunity for the council, if you want to discuss that further.
I, I appreciate that, but I would like to query my colleagues to see if there are enough nodding heads for something like that? Is that?
I, I appreciate the, the approach that we're doing right now in prioritizing safety and going based on the general plan.
Heard from one or two.
I guess I'm kind of divided, but I mean, I would see it as advantageous if there's low-hanging fruit projects that we could get done without as much contention. So even though they might not be as high a priority project, it would be interesting to me to hear if there are some slam dunk. to me to hear if there are some slam dunk, for example, bike boulevards and neighborhoods that we're not going to have any pushback on. I would be interested in seeing if we could, you know, pump those up a little bit, just because with each one of these, it seems like it can be very contentious. And I think at the end of the day, you know, wherever we fall on North Humboldt or Humboldt Street, like I don't want us to keep finding ourselves in another Humboldt Street situation. It's, it's a, just, I'd like to see us get stuff done. So if there's, if there's projects that even if they're not as higher priority, we can get done, I'd like to kind of maybe consider moving those up.
Yes, of course. So I would just say, I, I think as City Manager mentioned, we will have a transportation review coming up in June. And I think that'll help provide a larger, big picture of like where we are, what we've done. The Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission gets more frequent updates on projects that we're doing. And in those updates, you, they do hear of some of those quick win projects that you're talking about. And as Director Fabry mentioned, we are getting some of those projects done when we can throughout the year. So the good news is I feel like that is kind of our trajectory. And, and it's the, it's the bigger, more divisive projects that involve parking loss and/or travel lanes that come to us, right? Because it's, it's, it requires this deeper dive, bringing the community and, and talking about trade offs. And I think the inconvenient truth is that's what we're here for, and that's what we need to be working on if we're serious about moving forward. I, I think, I, I think, yeah.
I'm hearing two and two, kind of.
I'd like to wait till June and then what I'd recommend is in June, can we look at the different types of projects? So we know what are low, medium, high.
So that's fine. I'm seeing nodding heads for majority of you that we can bring back, I think from staff's perspective, we can bring back kind of the package of what that looks like overall. So that's the direction I have at this moment. So we're not changing, pivoting on policy at this moment. I'm just going to go ahead and ask staff to go back and provide information as to the projects on the horizon.
And with the one additional request, that a lot of the bigger projects come with funding from grants or whatever, whereas some of these other projects are locally funded. So I think the source of funding is, should be part of that discussion.
That's fine. I think we can highlight that, like one, just a real quick example would be 19th Avenue in Norfolk, where we have, I think a $9 million gap in funding that we'd have to look for state federal funding.
And I just, since 19th was brought up, I will need to recuse myself on that project. It's next to my workplace, so.
Okay.
Should I give some comments?
Yeah, I was going to say we're missing something.
Okay, I, look how I'm going last, aren't you proud? I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I know that was a lot to get through, so thank you very much. Would you mind pulling up slide 36? Maybe while that's coming up, I just want to confirm, is the bike lane, it's going to be protected on both sides of the street?
Yes.
So I guess my question on the west side of the street, like Sherwin-Williams has a parking lot, so how are they going to get in and out of their parking lot?
It does open up where the driveways are. Yeah, there's no intention to like block them out from being able to access their driveways.
Okay, so because in this image, it's completely closed?
We haven't updated the image yet.
Okay, so that we're going to get a new image?
Yeah, the striping is such that the striping carries all the way through, but the delineators are not actually all the way through.
Okay, great. And then just kind of shifting a little bit down to Saratoga and that intersection. So that middle, it's going to be a right hand turn. Is there a reason you can't go straight as well?
You mean the southbound left turn?
Yeah, sorry.
So the way that the signal is designed currently is what's called a protected left turn. So you have a left turn arrow that comes up and that allows you to make the left turn when that left turn arrow comes up. When you combine that left turn with a through movement, you need to modify the entire signal so that entire movement goes at the same time. So southbound left would need to go with southbound through all of the time. What's nice about the way that it's currently operated is because the volume for the southbound left is not that high most of the time, it can turn off and that would allow northbound traffic to go through. So it provides an optimization for the way that the signal currently operates. And I think that if we were to consider making that a southbound through lane, it's just going to reduce the level of service, increase delays as a result of it.
Okay. And I assume there was some kind of traffic analysis or data. Could you send that to the city council?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I just want to echo what Lisa and Rob brought up, just on the, the fire and emergency vehicle services. I, I just want to confirm with the fire department that we aren't potentially hindering them in this process or that they have an alternative route, if we could get follow up on that as well. And then I watched the video online. So I believe it's much further down, closer to like the 28th. But I did see that there's a portion in the video where the bikers merge into the lane. And I just wanted to echo some of the comments I heard from the public that this particular arterial, I was, I was out there the other night, there's a ton of speeding that's happening between roadblocks all the way through to the Arco Station. Like people are just flying. And so I do worry about bikers having to merge into traffic. I do think that's going to be a potential risk.
Can I respond to that? So that is something that we had looked at for that location. Due to the way that the signal operates at that location, we're going from multiple lanes, so two southbound lanes, a dedicated left turn lane to on the opposite side, it's just one lane in each direction, just a northbound and southbound lane. And the way that those operate are what's, it's less protected. How about that? And so the way that you transition bikes into that area is quite challenging. And that necessitated us to provide this merge and the weaving across the travel lanes. But one of the things that was added, and I don't think we have a slide for it, is just ahead, that's actually just north of this, is where motorists are turning into their right turn lane, we've added a small speed bump actually to help reduce the speeds for those vehicles as they're looking to cross over the bike lane and get into that southbound right turn lane. So it was intentionally looked at in that same vein.
Okay, I, I think that's it for me in terms of the comments.
Thank you very much for a great presentation. You've heard a lot of feedback. I'm sorry, I maybe it was a little long winded, but you know, thank you. And with that, we will.
Mayor, we'll go ahead and we'll take that feedback in and make refinements. And then we'll be going through the process and you'll see this most likely on a consent agenda item in the fall.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And we'll continue to engage. If anyone wants to contact us, they're more than.
Through the mayor, can I just ask a general question?
Yes, of course.
Just Alex, those A frames, do they have QR codes on them?
They do have QR codes on them.
So do we have any data on people actually scanning and using that?
Yeah, we do have hits from the QR code, from my understanding.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I throw in one other piece of feedback that she just kind of reminded me? So when people came to our outreach events and signed up on the mailing list, did we invite them tonight? And did we invite, if they came to the first one, did we invite them to the second one? And do we invite them tonight?
So not specifically from the mailing list. Yeah, we were going off of a, you know, an outreach plan that we had developed, but it's good feedback for next time.
Yeah, constructive feedback would be if they come to the first meeting, make sure we invite them to all the subsequent meetings.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's noted.
Yeah, thanks. It's sorry, it just popped in my head. Okay. Yeah, let's take a five minute bio break and then we'll come back for our last new business. Thank you. All right, let's go. Moving right along. Our final item for tonight, new business item 14, city council priority list adoption. Presentation by Christina Horstberger, Assistant City Manager. Let's adopt the city council priority list for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Welcome, Christina. I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Newsom and council members. Christina Horstberger, Assistant City Manager. Before you at this time is the city council priority list, or I should say draft priority list. There we go. So, so for your consideration tonight, we will be reviewing the proposed city council 25, 26 priority list for final direction. We'll be reviewing it for any final revisions to the verbiage of the priorities, revisions to the category of the priorities, category in terms of the schedule, the time, the time classifications, and if there are any additional priorities that you wish to remove. I will make one correction. So we did classify it as adoption of the priorities. And I do want to just clarify that we are seeking final direction and it will be adopted as part of the budget, which is going to come before you at the second meeting in June. So, which brings us to our next slide. Just a little explanation for you all and for anyone who's still with us at this hour. The city council goal setting process is a three step process with the first of these three steps being the blue sky meeting, which this year took place on February 22nd. That first step entails the city council reviewing and discussing existing priorities that were adopted last year and that are carried over from previous years. We look at the status of those existing priorities, make any revisions, remove any that are completed and just take an overall look at those to see where we're at in the status. Proposed priorities are discussed and the ones that council agrees will make it to this year's priority lists are then carried forward with any suggested revisions. And then in addition to that, staff's work items are reviewed so that there is a good idea of the overall workload of staff. Those are staff work items that are not on the priority list, but that are needed in order to keep the organization moving and for the city to conduct its daily business. So at that meeting, we did modify, remove and reorganize priorities. Since that time, we have reviewed and revised the list a little bit more because we've made progress on some of the priorities since then. And we've adjusted the work plan items, we've removed additional priorities. We have reevaluated some of the resource intensities because of that progress and because of the completion. We've also looked at the priorities that are new that we added to the list and then a little bit of refinement on those. And we've looked at the time assessments and the time evaluations that we thought would be needed for the priorities that remain on the list today. And so we've categorized them. And so we've categorized them for you to look at tonight. And then the next step will be the adoption, and that goes with the budget, which will be coming before you on June 16th. So notable edits that we made. Since the Blue Sky Meeting, that I thought it was important to call out for tonight's meeting and for anyone who's viewing. We removed completed items such as the gardening waste ordinance because it was completed, the sister cities policy, and the onboarding of a retail economic consultant who will be assisting us with business support and with support on evaluating mixed-use projects. So those priorities have been completed. We combined some related items. We received direction to combine priorities five and 31 because they were very closely related. We also added a new priority, and it was also very closely related. So we combined that one as well. Those ones are all stormwater management and lagoon-related, and we thought that it made most sense to complete those or to combine those all together. We also had a priority that was related to business improvement districts. That was a pretty, pretty short and concise. And we had a new one added that had a lot more detail to it, and we combined those two together. So we thought it made more sense to do that that way, and so that we had all the detail in one place. The next thing we did is to re-categorize some of the items to reflect a more accurate completion schedule. We moved things to near, to year one that were near completion. So the wastewater treatment plant work, which has been several years in the making, is now nearing completion. The Marina Library work and Central Park improvements are underway, and we're getting close to realizing those projects, and so we moved those up. They were in the five-year slots and two-to-five-year slots before, and so they don't need to be in those long-range time horizons anymore, so we moved those up. The customer response management system has also been moved. Conversely, the stormwater lagoon priority is in the five-year category because in combining it, we took a good, hard look at the complexity of that project, and it is very complex, it's phased, it is a long-duration project with a long horizon. And we thought it made more sense to keep that as a long-term priority, something that we will be working on for many years, and that has a lot of tasks associated with it. We also made some minor revisions, such as revising the completion date for EV charging, which is something that we heard from you all, that 2035 makes more sense for completion. So not changing the importance of it, but changing the completion date to one that's more realistic, so 2035 instead of 2030. And then we made revisions to the work plan items just based on the status of where we are and what we've done and what we've completed to date. And so that brings us to the list itself. And so we landed with 41. We started off with 37 that we had last year. We added the new ones that we talked about back in February. And when it came to all said and done, we, we finished with 40, with 41 for this next fiscal year coming up. These yellow bands that you see represent our time horizons, and so that, you, those represent breakpoints that you can use as a sort of visual pause. And so I'm going to go over them here one by one. You can stop me at any time, or we can go through them all, and then we can circle back. On the right-hand column, I did put in the major revisions in case you want to use those as a reference point. And so we have 18 in our one-year horizon category. The first one is to establish policies to decarbonize existing buildings and infrastructure and eliminate methane gas use by 2030. This one is underway, and we are working on it now. We are in the outreach phase. The next is create a comprehensive, ongoing citywide community outreach and engagement program. We did onboard a fellow this past year, and she completed a very good draft plan for us, and we are doing all kinds of things to further our communications and community engagement efforts. Number three, create a capital infrastructure plan or process for reinvesting in infrastructure to allow the city to evaluate city facilities and assets when upgrades are needed. Number four, explore a resolution affirming the city's commitment to integrate new technologies such as artificial intelligence without displacing workforce. This is something that we just started working on, and we're in the research phase right now. Number five, conduct an annual transportation review of progress on all ongoing plans, including project updates and key metrics such as city mode share, collision and safety data. You just heard about that. You're going to be getting your report in June, and that'll be the first one since this priority was created. Number six, create speeds, complete speed surveys. That's going to be coming to you soon. Number seven, explore limiting overnight RV parking in commercial corridors. That's something we've been hearing a lot about, and so we do expect to be bringing a study session your way in the next fiscal year. Number eight.
I think let's get through the list, and then we can follow the questions.
Then we can go back to them and have discussion. So number eight, explore how the city of San Mateo could partner with Sustainable San Mateo and Peninsula Clean Energy and change forwards, or sorry, charge-forward San Mateo, a county-wide effort to ensure that residents have equitable access to electric vehicle charging infrastructure and reduce county's greenhouse gas emissions from transportation. Currently, 49% of the region's emissions. Possibilities include installing streetlight chargers near apartments and multifamily units, collaborating with Peninsula Clean Energy to identify apartment and multifamily contracts, and offer other financial and technical support for installing EV chargers, incentivize private employers to expand employee and customer EV charging. Number nine, develop and implement an ordinance to prohibit the use of gas leaf blowers within the city of San Mateo. And for this one, you do have some public comments we received supporting this item in your packet. Number 10, youth service officers at schools, a funding program. You also heard about that one earlier this evening. Number 11, develop city council code of conduct with measurable consequences akin to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors language with enforcement. Number 12, develop policy on regulating mobile food vending trucks. Number 13, explore and evaluate allowing a retail cannabis store front in downtown. 14, deliver the clean water program, which we already touched on. 15, explore the implementation of a customer response management or 3-1-1 system. Again, you heard about that one, and the delivery is expected this next year. 16, implement the Central Park Master Plan. Again, groundbreaking took place, and that is on schedule for delivery. Number 17, address structural issues at the Marina Library, same comment. Number 18, explore piloting a city grant fund. And then we move on to our two-to-five-year horizon priorities, and on to number 19, consider adoption of wage theft protections. Number 20, initiate a community budget process for anticipated revenue from Measure CC. Number 21, enhance citywide disaster response and emergency preparedness. 22, implement the adopted general plan. 23, implement housing element policies. 24, reconstruct all failed streets in San Mateo by 2026. 25, replace all remaining high-voltage circuits to improve safety and reliability of the streetlight system. 26, implement a robust year-round downtown activation program as part of our core city services. 27, explore how the city of San Mateo can partner with the San Mateo Union High School District, San Mateo Foster City School District, and other public, private, and nonprofit organizations to support Empower San Mateo, a community collaborative model aiming to help 1,000 equity-priority San Mateo students graduate and thrive. Possibilities include evaluating how our city's assets, for example, parks and recreation centers, libraries, and more could be further activated to support these and other San Mateo students, considering expansion piloting of programming that could help such students find internships and local work experience, including within the city itself. Number 28, prioritize planning, design, construction, and maintenance of rapid safety improvement projects citywide, and ensure there is a reliable city fund for long-term success. 29, improve and strengthen democratic systems and decrease polarization. 30, work with schools, community colleges, businesses, and other organizations to expand youth and senior workforce development and civic leadership opportunities. 31, commission a citywide feasibility study for groups of San Mateo businesses interested in forming business improvement districts, including existing smaller districts outside of downtown, such as 25th Avenue and Crystal Spring Shopping Center, and newer groupings such as sections of El Camino Real or downtown businesses that may wish to pursue a property-based BID or other complementary structure to the existing downtown San Mateo association. 32, explore senior hubs at MLK or Bear'sford Senior Centers. Senior hubs, expand our current senior programming offerings to better meet the needs of our senior community members by increasing the variety and frequency of events tailored specifically to seniors, such as adding options for engagement, socialization, and overall well-being. Also, investigate partnering with other organizations to provide coffee, tea, or light refreshments that will enhance the overall experience, but also encourage more participation by creating a welcoming and comfortable atmosphere. Number 33, develop a climate adaptation plan to establish a comprehensive strategy for resiliency and adaptation against sea level rise and flooding to ensure we are well poised for funding opportunities and include Foster City and Burlingame and Planning Efforts. 34, minimize impacts to residents from train horn noise at city at-grade crossings. Now we're in the five-years-or-more category, and this brings us to priority number 35. Expedite efforts to improve the stormwater collection drainage and storage system, including dredging the Marina Lagoon. 36, implement a green fleet by 2035. 37, expedite efforts to provide high-quality effluent from the wastewater treatment plant upgrades to support the future production of potable water. 38, study resource feasibility for the downtown grade separations and long-term train corridor improvements. 39, improve traffic flow on 19th Avenue and Fashion Island Boulevard from Grant to Mariners Island Boulevard. 40, complete all high and medium-high priority projects in the 2020 Bicycle Master Plan and the Pedestrian Master Plan with the goal of prioritizing quick-build projects where feasible. And number 41, expedite efforts to improve and build climate resiliency into the city's stormwater collection, conveyance, flood control, and levee systems, including dredging the Marina Lagoon. And that one comes with a long work plan, which I won't hang out on right now, but we can definitely go back to. And this brings us back to the action requested, which is to review for final revisions to the priorities themselves, the categories of the priorities, the removal of any priorities. And again, these will be included with the budget. We do have all of our department heads either here live or remotely for any questions, which I can't answer, which definitely will be some if you have any which are department-specific. And some of the departments also have their staff here for any particular subject matter areas which require specific staff.
Thank you for a great presentation. Thank you to all the staff that's here in the room. I know it's late, and thank you to all the staffers online as well. Before we go to our comments, we will open it up to public comment. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment requests?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom, we have two requests to speak in chambers. If you wish to speak on this item, and you have not provided me with a request to speak, please do so now. Seeing no additional requests, we have one request from Mike Swire, who's not, doesn't appear to be in the room. Our first and only speaker on this item will be Kevin Simpson, and that'll be three minutes.
Thank you. Welcome, Kevin.
Hello. Three in one night for you. I'm really, came here to talk about number six and number 12. And there's plenty of other interesting things on this list, but I think they're all deserved to be on there. And for the most part, I agree with how they're, how they're listed. I can't tell you how important number six is. There have been so many council meetings that I thought about using my open-item-comment time to talk about the fact that we need to find out where this is and get it done, because it unlocks so many other efforts that we could be making to reduce the toll that speeding and traffic nonsense is taking on our citizens. We're seeing people die because people are in a rush. We all talk about how, you know, oh, got a speeding ticket today, and we don't take them seriously. We can't even give out speeding tickets because we can't enforce them because we haven't done this traffic survey. People are dying because of excessive speed and because there's no way to practically enforce it with radar. So I really think this is high. I'm delighted to see it, number one. Please don't move it down, and please let's get this thing done this year so we can step up enforcement. On number 12, which is the mobile food truck, this may seem like a minor thing, and I think it's often addressed as kind of a, oh, well, what's the safety of those food trucks? I cannot emphasize enough how much we need to think about the impact on people who live around these food trucks. Now, I used to have a problem with this. One took up residence across the street from my house, and it was open from about 4 o'clock to about 11:12 or 1:00 in the morning every night. And what we got was double parking, horn-blowing. Bicycle, bicyclist actually got hit there because he was trying to get up on the sidewalk to get around cars double parked in the bike lanes on both sides. These things also pose a health hazard. They dump grease and things like that on the street, and we really need to get our hands around it because it's a lot more insidious, and it just seems like it's mushrooming. I'm seeing them everywhere. So I want to speak up for the people who have to live next to one of these things if it happens to camp out in your neighborhood. So I hope we'll keep those things on there. But otherwise, I think this is a great list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, we have one speaker. Mark, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that item number, I believe is number nine, the gas-powered leaf blowers. I've already sent an email to city council on this topic and forwarded the same email to the city clerk later this evening. I'm the big advocate of this. I feel like I'm surrounded by leaf blowers in my neighborhood, and it really does have, I think, an impact on the quality of life and the negative one of that. And so I'm really excited that this is on the list, and I hope it doesn't go to low. I hope it stays at medium, and selfishly would love to see it get to high. Lots of our neighboring cities have policies around gas-powered leaf blowers. And I strongly believe that, like, moving away from that is, is a, is a positive around quality of life, quality of environment, and just, I think, a good thing to be doing, thinking about what we can be doing to help all the residents of San Mateo. So I appreciate this being on the list. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's go ahead and open it up to comments and questions from the council. Who would like to go first? All right, council member, sort of go get it.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Lisa looked at me, so she was saying.
You've gone last all night. You can go first.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So I do, I do have some recommendations or revisions. Number 32, the senior hubs. I'm wondering if we can fast-track this. The rationale here is that, as you know, the federal government is cutting funding, and we have our age-friendly coalition who... and we have our age-friendly coalition who is also running out of funding at the end of this year, I believe. And we have self-help for the elderly that typically gets lunches subsidized through the county. And I think we need to really examine what we're doing for our seniors. They're our fastest-growing demographic in San Mateo. And make sure that they, one, have a welcoming spot where they can hang out and get together because that might be their only interaction during the day, and also, two, you know, that we can provide some kind of support should we lose larger funding. So I'd love to see this one fast-tracked and reprioritized. And in an effort to consolidate to do that, I'm wondering if we could swap it out with number 13 and move that one lower on the list, which is the Exploring and Evaluating Retail Cannabis. Do you want me to keep going?
So I think just on senior hubs specifically, staff is doing a lot of work supporting.
Absolutely.
I know that we're looking at, Joanne, you want to come up here and talk a little bit about just the work that we're doing in this area? Additionally, I believe that we're recruiting right now for four recreation supervisors, and we need to get the team up to speed, but I don't want to get out ahead of our Parks and Rec Director, Joanne McGreeney. Maybe you want to speak to this before making any changes? I just want to make sure.
Sure. Good evening. Yeah, no, that's absolutely right. We're actively recruiting for our supervisor positions. I would say we are working in this direction and happy to work harder and faster. We're doing things with different senior groups for our mobile recreation. We're doing different intergenerational programming. We're talking about senior lunch programs and partnering with different organizations to better serve San Mateans. So happy to move in that direction.
Okay, great. I just, I think the thing here, sorry, Lisa, would you like to make a comment?
You will get no argument from me about this one because this is one of mine. And you are doing a lot. There is absolutely no question. I was over at the Senior Information Fair, and while there were lots of outside groups, it was just amazing. The one thing I would say is, and this you can do with lower resource while you're figuring everything else out, is do a much stronger outreach job because I think people don't know all the things that you're doing in broader groups. So I'm looking at new and different ways of getting the word out there about what you're doing while you're recruiting the people, while you're going faster, while you're doing all the things that I think are very important. So I would support you.
I just, thank you through the mayor. I just wanted to chime in on this item because I actually asked Christina a question about this earlier from a similar space. I think it seemed to me that the initial ask was maybe not major, and so why would it be a two- to five-year project? And I'll just quote the answer. Well, I'll paraphrase. I think the idea is there's uncertainties surrounding facilities closures, resources procurement, and staffing overall, but in year one, we can better publicize our current program and provide some sort of smaller starter services at some facilities, such as coffee and snacks. So I hope that, I found that answer satisfying.
Yeah, I think I'm just worried about the larger macroeconomic climate and the larger climate and some of the narrative that's being pushed from the federal level. And again, I think because this is one of our larger demographics in the community, we really need to, as a council, reconsider how we prioritize this. Because when I look at the whole list, this is like the one item for seniors right now today. So totally appreciate your comments, Adam. I know it's an extra lift for you guys, but I think perhaps there's an opportunity for us to look at additional funding measures or at least discuss that, too. So.
So I heard from two. Is there a third nodding head to have this being year one? We would have to, you know, we will look at other outside funds.
And again, just to, before you chime in, I had said number 13 to deprioritize that.
And I am the person who introduced number 13, and I'm happy to support that, to move it back.
But, okay, but you agreed to have the senior hubs being year one, then?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. We got the direction. Thank you. Okay. And then I see nodding heads for putting cannabis in two to five? Yep. I see three nodding heads there. Okay.
I wanted to just ask about the food vendors, which I agree with Mr. Simpson, that is a priority. Is there room to combine number 12 and number seven? I know they're different topics, but they're in some ways, I think, similar, which is the RVs and the food vendors. Nope.
There's different laws on the books for both, so I would recommend that we keep them separate.
Okay, never mind. Think, was that a bad question?
She said never.
Thank you.
Never, that's never a bad question.
It's okay if it is. I just wanted to follow up on number 29, which is the educational outreach for voters. Are we following what's happening at a national level? Because, for example, the SAVE Act was just passed, so that will significantly change voter registration. Do we know how that's going to impact future election cycles, et cetera?
Not something that's, for the mayor, not something that's currently being actively tracked at the city clerk's office. I do know that through the Conny Registrar Voters Office, that's something that is being monitored, also in coordination with California Secretary of State's office. We do receive routine updates from the Conny Register Voters update, so that's likely something that'll be pushed onto the cities closer to election season.
Okay. We don't have to change the priority. I just wanted to flag that. And then just wanted to talk about, you know, since we did hear from, in the special session, from our police youth services officers, number 10, I do think, you know, that continues to be a high priority, would like to keep that a high priority. And then just on the Measure CC funding, I needed a little bit more time to kind of understand. I know this was brought up at a previous council, but I do wonder with our focus on financial sustainability, if that's something we could potentially push.
That was on my list, and I would actually like to see that either eliminated or deprioritized. Number?
Number 20.
Twenty.
Can you pull it up? Thank you.
Just don't think that we're in a financial space to establish a new program right now, especially $500,000 worth.
Yeah, I think I agree with Ms. Fernandez on that.
I have two. Is it?
I have some concerns just because, you know, we got the voters to pass the measure with the promise that they would see some results. So while I would maybe be okay with changing the amount, I don't think we should completely pull it off. But I'm open to hearing what other people think.
I would be comfortable with five digits.
Me, too.
Okay. I share the mayor's concerns, and I also find the logic, frankly, a little questionable because from a budgetary standpoint, if we had not passed Measure CC, we would be in a bigger hole. So I don't really understand. And, but I'm hearing three, so I'll leave it there.
So I'm hearing three. Are we?
Do you want to weigh in, Lisa?
She weighed in.
Okay, good.
Would you like staff to put this into the, well, it's already in the two to five bucket, but it sounds like you only want it less than $100,000? I'm seeing two nodding heads. Pilot, so three. Okay. Got the direction.
So I think, okay, well, I think those are all my comments, and thank you for the presentation.
Who would like to go next? Okay, council member for.
Okay. So a couple of, so I want at number 10, I would like the youth services officer to continue to being a high priority, and if there's any way to, like, make it number one or, like, make it like a super, super high priority, that would be awesome. I don't know if we can do that, but I think it's really important that we, you know, invest money in having that third officer. And if there's any way that we could encourage our school districts to partner with us or come back to the table, I don't know if that's part of this discussion.
So that's part of the year one discussion that staff's going to be working on, and the chief kind of spoke to that earlier this evening of the work that we're doing with the superintendents of the school districts currently. And we'll report back.
Awesome. And then another one was item 20, which we just took care of. I'd like to poll or deprioritize number 27, just because I am not comfortable, I'm still, it doesn't feel transparent to me that there's a firm partnership. We've established the partnership qualities or the MOU between PAL and ETA, and it just, it doesn't feel like it fits in with the rest of the vibe that we have going on here for the priorities. And so I would ask for that.
So can we hold that thought real quick and just get a vote to extend the meeting? We're right at 11.
Yes.
Sure. All right. Is there council consensus to extend the meeting by 40 minutes?
Forty?
I'm being generous because I don't want to ask again.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. We have the direction.
Okay, so.
Continue. Thank you.
Twenty-seven. Who's talking?
Somebody say they want to talk and talk about 27, or we're gonna.
I'll start, just to mention, as I brought forward this priority, it has been deprioritized from the last time we took a look at these priorities. It shifted from year one to years two to five, and that came about as a result of some further discussions following our Blue Sky session. I spoke with the chief personally. I spoke with the ETA folks, the folks who are working on this program, who came to me, and city manager Kojikian. And we all got in the room, in a room together here in City Hall with Lieutenant Joyce from PAL to try and understand whether there is, in fact, overlap. I feel like those conversations have not concluded, as I think you're sort of alluding. But that, I think, was the idea behind deprioritizing it to two to five years. My feeling is, you know, personally, I brought forth this priority because I felt like I was introduced to an opportunity that I thought would be, you know, potentially enhancing and improving service to students in both of our districts, not in conflict or competition with PAL, but in enhancing or potentially complementing and partnering with PAL. If that turns out to not be the case, I will, I would be asking to withdraw this priority. I don't feel like I've learned yet whether that is, in fact, the case. I feel like there's a little more, my takeaway from the discussion was that the Empower San Mateo team had a little more work to do, frankly, to work with our districts and launch this, the program that they have described here. And so I felt like partnering from the city's perspective this year, year one, was a bit early. And so I think it's fair to say that right now, the idea is to not necessarily commit resources to this this year. But I would ask that we, that we allowed it to remain on the list in this lower priority and revisit it, as opposed to, like, withdrawing it until we've had a little more time maybe to evaluate whether it is, in fact, at issue.
I just want to see where the council's at on this because I saw some nodding heads as Adam was speaking.
My feedback would be that it's already been deprioritized, and we will continue to learn about it, and if, so I'm comfortable with where it is.
Do we have buy-in from the schools?
So that's the one area where we noted that, and we deprioritized it to two to five because in order for any movement to move forward, first and foremost, we want to see formal adoption by the high school district and the elementary school district before we engage any further at this point. And I'm seeing nodding heads from the council.
I just want to know, like, what was PAL's feedback?
So the chief, you want to jump in? Because he's part of the PAL board, so I don't want to jump in for PAL specifically.
That'd protect us. No, good evening. Yeah, we've enjoyed a strong relationship with ETA. We have not been included in the new venture. We did meet with them, offered to be part of that, and so far, I don't think that that's the direction that it's going. So frankly, I just, I don't know enough about it. We have not been part of the, other than trying to have those exploratory conversations and learn more about it, where we reached out, I frankly have not been part of any conversation. So I don't know that, I don't know whether, you know, we'd be part of that effort. We've enjoyed the partnership with ETA to this point. I just don't know whether that's, their plan is to include us moving forward.
Yeah, so I think where I'm coming from, just to be super blunt, PAL does a tremendous service to the city of San Mateo. And I think when we introduce a program like this, you open up the door, and I hear what you're saying, that you're not trying to create conflicting, you know, dynamics or competition. You're trying to do something that serves everybody. But if they don't have a seat at the table, that's worrisome to me, like genuinely, because what are we saying about, you know, 30 years of a relationship that they've established in the community? You know, they've built a lot of these partnerships, you know, they've funded a lot of initiatives on behalf of the city. So I think that's, that's the concern that I have, you know, in terms of prioritization, is we need to make sure we're, when we propose something like this, we're really doing it well, and we're bringing all the right collaborators to the table. And most importantly, if this is a school district initiative, the schools need to be bought into it. So, I mean, I'm leaning towards, I agree with Nicole, like, I want to see this on the list, but I think it needs to be in the five years, and we really need to sit down and work out a cohesive strategy.
So is there movement to move from two to five to five or more, then?
I'm fine with where it is, and I think if we get more information, it may come off the list altogether. So it's just, it's, we need to get to the next step, and that one thing will, sorry, that's it. That's my thought. Like, sorry.
I just want to make sure, then, you know, that whatever we do, you know, can we get a summary back to the council, like, yes, we sat down with PAL, yes, we sat down with all the school principals, and, you know, like, get a list.
Totally on board with that. And I think that'll even tie in a little bit with the CSO conversation, too.
Okay. And Adam, I appreciate you. I'm not trying to, like, poo-poo your idea. I just, I'm concerned about making sure all the right stakeholders are at the table.
Yeah, no, I agree completely. I think this has been a learning experience. I mean, I'll admit that I, you know, did not know everything that PAL does and the breadth and depth of the work. We got a presentation earlier tonight to help educate and inform on that front. And I think there was just, I think, a bit of a communication breakdown earlier when this came up as something that was, you know, requested to be considered as part of the Blue Sky process. I think, in hindsight, is a little early. That's the idea behind the deprioritization, and I fully agree. There will be future discussions.
So I have my direction. I have three affirmative nodding heads saying we'll go two to five, but we want to see where the school districts at on their overall approach with this program before we get involved at all.
Right.
Yep. I see five nodding heads on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, still my time. So I'm just going to go with my last one, which is number 12. That is food trucks. As Mr. Simpson had commented earlier, this is an issue that is ongoing in my district. It's all parts of the city, actually, but in north-central, it seems to be particularly acute in north-central, north-shoreview, and downtown. And so apart from the work, and I do appreciate that it's. Um, and so apart from the work, and I do appreciate that it's, um, I know in a primary spot because I do think that it's important. I was wondering if I could ask our council to provide guidance to the PD on an urgency basis on the food trucks, specifically regarding, um, kind of, I guess tying into another priority that may be hitting my district and Mayor Newsom's district about oversized vehicles and developing, uh, letting PD enforce the oversized vehicle ordinance that we already have on our books.
If I can jump in here. So I heard you talking about food trucks. Then I heard you talking about, um, time for my voice, the mobile vending. So are you, I mean, right now it's just a discussion about the, the priority list, what to change, what to make a higher priority or less priority. So there would be no direction given by the council right now, tonight. But, you know, the, as far as the item is concerned for, for, for recreational vehicles, if the council wants that to come sooner rather than later, excuse me, we can do that and provide you with more, uh, research and, and have a fuller discussion about it at a future council meeting, but it wouldn't be right now.
I guess we have two staff members. We have one Eugene, you could, he could talk about just how we approach our food vending right now. So, um, and then I know that our chief, we, we do have along the books of enforcing no, no sleeping in vehicles. But I think that would be part of a overall, um, study session in the future amongst everything else.
Okay. I, I just need, I just need the chief to be able to enforce the law.
We weren't enforcing no sleeping in vehicles.
We are not. That's, that's what I'm saying.
I'm trying to change that.
And in order, oh, go ahead, chief.
Welcome back, chief.
Welcome. Thank you. Uh, yeah. Just to clarify, the food trucks and the RVs for us are two entirely different issues.
Okay.
The oversized vehicles does, that, that ordinance does apply to both, but it's not, that's not what the ordinance is intended to do to address either one of those problems. So it's really not, uh, a stop. It's, it's simply just kind of a stopgap that just pushes the problem from one area to another. The reality is, is that there are ordinances on the books that do address RVs that we can enforce. We don't enforce those now because that's not the, the, been the city's policy for the last several years. The same cannot be said for food trucks, other than simply being required to pay, um, a business tax. There's no criminal, um, enforcement that we can, that the police department can, um, can undertake other than the, you know, red zone, um, oversized vehicle, just your typical parking regulations that any other vehicle would have to follow. So there are ordinances that do exist regarding, um, the RVs that do, that, that we, that we could potentially could use if the council decided to go that way. But we don't have those existing statutes on the books for food trucks, if that makes any sense.
So I would just add, no, I completely agree. They are two entirely separate items, RVs and, uh, and food trucks. The, I mean, the food vending, food vending, it would have to be consistent with state law that was passed and several years ago. But for RVs, um, you know, I want to be mindful of just the noticing issue because right now what's on the council agenda was the priority list. And to make a decision like that, to provide that kind of direction, you want to make sure that that's adequately noticed for, for the benefit of the public.
I just would like to say, and I don't mean to put you two against each other, but Alex specifically told me, like, if you have things that you think you'd like to have direction on now.
Bring it here.
Bring it here.
That's why we're bringing it here.
I'm okay. I mean, I, I completely understand what you're saying, Prasanna, but I do want to say that maybe we could put this as an agenda item on an upcoming meet, which is as a, as an output of what we talked about tonight, we'd like to come back and say, you know, what, what things are on the books that we can do now for these types of issues?
Right.
As opposed to like, yeah, this is a, still a priority, but also what can we do now? What direction can I give to Ed Barberini and the San Mateo PD now?
Right now.
And, and so is that, is that something we can agendize then for?
No, absolutely. Right. And if the council direction is, you know, bring it back for a, a future council agenda, that's completely fine. And doing to tell staff here, we want, the council wants that to be agendized in a certain period of time. That's.
So could it be as broad as, um, having conversations about all open, all blue sky priorities? And what action items can be prioritized? Could that be, or is that too broad? Do I have to say specifically 12?
Number 12.
So I think it would be, yeah, I think it would be that just so staff can prepare on both items. I, I would want a little bit of time to meet with staff. We have some memos. We're already working on this stuff internally. I just have to make sure that we're all on the same page, have all the information to share with the council to get the formal direction that we need from the council.
Just to clarify, so we're talking about number 12, which is the food vending right now.
We, we are, and she touched into seven.
Because they're like large trucks.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, they're big trucks. Okay. But just for the direction, number, we want number 12 to come back.
Right.
With urgency or whatever. But like we, I need some direction because my community is up in arms about this topic, this topic.
So point taken. I know that I just received a memo on Friday from staff on food vending. And so, um, we'll go ahead and we'll meet internally and then figure out, we'll, we'll get you back with a timeline. But I hear the aggressive, you want to be aggressive in this area I'm seeing from council.
And the separate item around RVs and the issues that are happening specifically in Mayor Newsom and my district, is that the same timeline? It would have to re be re-agendized for a future meeting? Or can I just say, can we just vote and say, Chief Barberini, please go enforce the law?
So there's. So, so with all, you know, this has been a longstanding, um, direction that the council has given to staff. And I want to make sure that we, um, unfold the layers of those onions and kind of lay it all up so that you guys know exactly, uh, pros, cons, any, any, you know, anything that we need to think about just long-term, if you decide to change the stance of the city moving forward in terms of notification, being compassionate, just all these things. We have to set up exactly all the high touch that we would do, uh, before we go out and make our changes overall to how we enforce.
So can I just recommend that we suggest starting with number 12, since you expressed that that's a high urgency need? And then let Alex and staff figure out, you know, when they can come back to us on that.
Can we recommend staff give us a, can we provide a timeline for when they'd come back? Cause I'm not, I'm not looking to wait until the end of 2025 for this.
No, no, I don't, I, I could, we can come back this calendar year for sure. And I'm hoping that we're looking at and talking with staff, I think by summer, for sure.
That's fine.
Can I just also make one more comment on this through the mayor? Sorry. You, you mentioned the word compassion and I do also, you know, I know there's a sense of urgency here, but this is a sensitive topic for sure. This is some people's livelihood. So I want to make sure that the city does also have time to be solutions oriented and come up with some compassionate solutions that work for everybody.
Of those items.
Yes, and seven too, but.
Yes.
Trying to focus on 12.
Fair enough. Understood.
But I, I support Nicole's initiative here.
So basically what I hear from council is we'll have a study session, uh, on both, we'll have separate study sessions on both items, uh, between now and probably September. Does that work for timeline?
So the other item being item seven.
Uh, is RVs is one item and then mobile vending is the other.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Who's next? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
In and out. No questions or comments further from me. Thank you.
Wow, that's. Okay. Uh, gosh darn it. Now we, now my field pressured to be.
You're not the last one.
Oh, wait. All right. I haven't, Lisa hasn't gone yet. Please, Lisa, that's great. Like.
You can still think. Okay. Let's see. So a couple of just clarifications. I think the, the item where, where is code of conduct, wherever that is. Number 11, I think. Um, just the, the description of it as akin to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, language with enforcement. I think actually it may be a broader discussion on that. So I, I, if we're going to be talking about it on Saturday, but, uh, I don't know whether you need, it, it doesn't need to be changed.
I think we have the direct, the direction and you're, we have a great AR and a great, um, kind of overall policy for reaction and refinement from the council for this coming Saturday at 1:00 PM.
Excellent. Yep. Um, then the one about whatever the number is, you would think I would know the numbers, Central Park. I think it's just clarification that we're, we're going to be doing the playground in, in implementing this here, not the entire Central Park plan.
We can note that in the updated change that it's specifically the playground phase one, correct joint? And that's phase, yeah, she's nodding in the back.
Yeah. And in the, on the page on the website about the playground, it says 18 to 24 months, which is separate than within a year. It's different.
So I believe deliveries, we're looking at September, October of 2026. Is that correct, Joe? Yes.
Okay. So maybe we just need to update the website.
Okay. We can do that. Noted.
Just, um, and the senior hubs. And then, um, so just FYI for the, the public, since it's such a big item, the one about, um, quiet zones and train noise, that, uh, we're going to be talking about that this summer, as I understand. Yes?
August.
Right. And that if this were to be approved, not knowing what's going to happen, it could be completed by 2027. Okay.
January 20.
January 2027, correct, Matt? Yes, I'm getting nodding heads.
Okay, great. Yep, that's it. Love the downtown activation program too, always.
All right. I'm going to go into speed race. I'm going to have a lot, but I'll try to get through it real fast. Okay. Just clarification on the EV infrastructure, uh, totally in alignment with, in fact, I suggested we moving it out five years. But it wasn't just for the reasons that we wouldn't have enough time. It was also to be in alignment with the state's expectations and laws. There's a lot changing with this. So I do want to make sure that our, 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 particularly our vehicle and, um, fleet services team are looking at this, um, and figuring out how to get the infrastructure, because even having moved it out five years, we have to have a plan today in order to hit that plan. Otherwise we're just kicking the can down the road. So want to make sure we have a plan for infrastructure for charging. Want to make sure that we don't apply more police cruisers that are not hybrid. So we, we now have made that connection. So I just want to make sure that that doesn't come back in front of us again in six months, that we need six more cruisers. And oh yeah, we haven't ordered hybrid. We need to order hybrids. We need to be on the list. I've also was at a Cal Cities event, uh, in Long Beach at the end of last year, and there was representatives from, um, Rivian. Rivian is moving into work trucks and they also do Amazon delivery trucks. And so they're using that platform specifically and trying to gauge themselves towards public works and city and government. So I would like to make sure that our fleet people have made that connection. We've talked a lot about seven and 12, uh, with seven, which is the homeless. Uh, want to make sure that we continue to have a compassionate approach. I want to make sure that laws, and we will be talking about this, so I won't dwell on it, but I want to make sure that laws that are on the books, we're enforcing and we're giving the power to this, the police department to do so. Um, there's been a big increase in RVs in San Mateo. And, uh, I mean, I've gone around and counted. It's, it's significantly higher since San Francisco and, uh, San Jose have implemented, you know, bans on, and, and started doing enforcement against RVs. Uh, again, it's something we want to make sure, excuse me, we're compassionate about, but also we don't want to be on the receiving end of the fact that they're enforcing laws that we also have and we're not. So that was that. Food trucks, same sort of thing. Want to make sure that they, what we can enforce is that they have a business tax license. We can't obviously enforce that they have food safety handling certifications, but if we're checking their note, that they don't have a business license or they do, we could also be asking to see that they have a license and referring that to the county. Also want to make sure that where they're not on city sidewalks, uh, city, there, there was one recently that left a ton of grease on the sidewalk, um, on, on South Delaware Street near Concar. Uh, and also that they're not on private property because we've heard specifically from Bridgepoint, some of the, some of the companies or, you know, restaurants there are frustrated that we can't seem to get the one sitting on the fringe off the fringe. So those are those things. Um, go even faster now. Ready? Uh, speed surveys, I want to put my support behind that. In the last week I have watched a cyclist be hit and I almost saw a child hit on a scooter today. So, uh, and that's in the last eight days. So I just want to make sure that we don't lose any momentum there. Um, number eight, if you could pull up eight. Do we need to, and this doesn't have to be answered now, but if we do, I'd like you to be brought back. Do we need to include PG&E into this conversation? Because, you know, what I've heard a lot when I talk to Pennsyl Clean Energy and I talked to them a little bit this weekend, is that ultimately while they are helping be out front and, you know, promote clean energy, there has to be adoption from PG&E to get the grid in place, to be able to be where we need to be in the next five and 10 years. So just a thought, and I, like I said, I don't need an answer now, but if staff could, uh, as they research it, come back with how we should maybe tie in PG&E. And then I guess, do I need to ask the council if they agree with that or is that?
I see nodding heads just to add PG&E collaboration as well. So we can add that to the paragraph.
I would like to also put my support behind number 10, the U service officers. Uh, I'd like to see whatever we can do to get the high schools particularly, and even the elementary and middle school with POA to reengage. I think we as a council on our own time can also help apply pressure to this situation. And we've all been very good at that. So, um, I think the public need to know and we, we need to, we need to help push that along. Uh, and then 2024, or sorry, number 24 was, is it possible to have all complete, all failed streets repaired by 2026? So is that something that we need Matt to come up and talk about for a brief second? How many failed streets do we currently have, Matt? And is a year and a half from now feasible? I know we're working on it. I just, I guess. Okay. So we're already, sorry.
Yeah. I just want to be clear. When we talk about failed streets, we're talking about the specific failed streets that were identified for the smooth streets program. So there was a specific set of streets that were identified. We will be done with all of those, um, by the end of 2026, end of calendar year 2026. That doesn't, that doesn't necessarily mean that there aren't other failed streets in this, in the city, but there was a specific list that was part of the smooth streets program. And that's what we're going to complete by the end of 2026.
That's fantastic. And I love it. I just, like, I always want to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for failure. And that's the only reason why I ask.
Yeah. The only, the only challenge we're running into is on a lot of these streets, uh, we've got problems where we have to do some of the deeper fixes because of soft soils. And we are contingent upon getting Cal Water and PG&E out there to lower people's service laterals so that allows us to come in and go deeper. So that's the only caveat I'd put in there is that, you know, we have pushed really hard on PG&E. Cal Water's been a lot more, uh, timely in their efforts, but PG&E has stepped up and provided multiple crews to get this stuff done. So we're hopeful that we're going to be staying on track. So as far as I know, we're on track right now, but that's the one caveat I would say is that some of this is dependent upon these other entities to do their work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for.
Comment before the director goes down. I thought part of the original program for smooth streets was to do the 21 miles and do it and send, figure out the plan for all the other streets. So we didn't continue to have failed streets that we would have to repair and maintain, but the true failed streets, we wouldn't be going back to that.
Yeah. Once, once we upgrade the streets, once the failed streets have been upgraded, then they get onto our ongoing pavement maintenance program where we're going out doing slurry seals, crack sealing, things like that to maintain the life of those for the long term. So, uh, that is part of our process. We, I mean, we do, we do have some streets that have pretty low pavement condition index. I don't know for sure if they're in the smooth streets category or if there are other ones. I'd have to check with staff to get the specific details on that. But we are managing our overall, uh, network of streets in terms of where can we do the most cost-effective treatments, maintain? We, you know, the best thing is to maintain the pavement condition above a certain level because it's a lot cheaper to do that. Then as soon as it gets below a certain level becomes a reconstruction, then it becomes very expensive. So that's our goal is to continue to maintain things. And, uh, overall we have a pretty high PC. I think overall 74, uh, 73 or 74 citywide. So we're doing pretty well overall. But we do have some of those streets at the low end that we're still trying to deal with.
So that might be something at the appropriate time to come back with a report to council as to, once you are working on it, you understand. Because that was one of the, the original deliverables of that program.
True.
So thank you.
So I think what we'll do is we'll just add to make it very clear in item 24 that reconstruct all failed streets as part of the smooth streets program.
Yeah, we're completing that program and then we'll.
That's right. And then we can.
The next one behind it. Well, yeah, but it's.
With a 74, uh, pavement condition index, it's really good. We put about eight to nine million a year into this program. Um, if we keep, you know, maintaining, we can probably pull a couple million out of that program and put it to other transportation projects potentially.
Awesome.
Yep. Seeing time, I know you have 10 minutes until, do you want to extend this again, or?
Uh, I have one more thing.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. The last thing, which I appreciate Lisa bringing up as well, was the train noise. I know we're meeting about it in August. Um, I have got a lot of pressure from my neighborhood specifically, or the southern part of my district around, uh, Hayward Park. And so I was just curious if it's possible at that meeting to find out more about what it needs to shore up the, that one station, because the one station only has two pedestrian crossings. And my understanding is that it needs to be quad gates, so I don't know what that looks like, but.
So staff has confirmed that Hayward Park is part of it, uh, those two pedestrian crossings as part of the train quiet zone noise, and so we'll report out about that in August as part of the overall program.
So in August, we'll hear what we need to do to.
For the whole corridor, exactly.
Okay, but, okay. So my question is, I'm trying to figure out if we could just get that one thing done faster, because I know it theoretically shouldn't.
It's all part of the overall project.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Let's close that. Thank you very much for your presentation. Um, yes, we've done it. And now, can we get through reports and announcements in 10 minutes? Maybe? Go ahead.
Two quick ones that were actually on the city manager's newsletter. So I know everyone in San Mateo is eager for a grocery store. There is a new Turkish, Turkish grocery store between Seventh and Eighth Street, so go check it out. Very exciting, love Turkish food. Um, and then I just wanted to say, congrats on the workday go live. That's huge to implement, and, um, no small feat. Yeah, shout out to the IT team. Um, and that's it for me.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, similarly, I would just love to shout out the fact that, and maybe at the appropriate time, the city clerk could report the final numbers, but we had outrageous response to our boards and commissions recruitment. I mean, we are interviewing 22 people for library positions. I think there are 13 for planning commission. So that was a really successful outreach effort.
I think it's 93 applications in total. We, last time we had 53, is that correct, Martin?
Uh, we, we are still going through the process of verification of eligibility. Um, but as of this morning, we have a total of 96 applications.
Holy moly.
It's fantastic. So congratulations to everybody's effort. Number two, I just happened to be walking downtown yesterday and saw that the scramble was put in place. So I want to say congratulations to that. That's fantastic. Pedestrian scramble, everybody go down to B Street.
Everybody do the scramble.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, and then, uh, the third one is, this Thursday night, our mayor is going to be honored at a distinguished citizen dinner.
Thank you.
So there we go, and supporting scouts as well. Thank you.
Please.
Um, just two quick items. Uh, one, I just want to shout out our amazing, uh, DSMA for a fantastic Boba Day. Uh, that was last week. I volunteered at the Boba Day, at the DSMA booth for the whole day, and just the eagerness and the numbers. It was a gray day, and I don't think we had as many people as last year, but we ran out of the little Boba sleeves in like three or four hours. Like, people were just happy, and it was so great to see, um, downtown so invigorated. Um, I also, uh, was part of a, a community meeting last week with my neighborhood association. I want to thank the chief for being there. And one of the items that came up was a speed limit off for e-bikes. And so I just wanted to put that out in the atmosphere to see if we might agenda is potentially looking at something like that. Uh, having a speed limit for e-bikes in the city of San Mateo.
So I know we just went through the blue sky item. That'd probably be a great item to put in the February blue sky. Um, and then we can move from there.
Great.
Although technically there is a speed limit as well, right? So any motorized vehicle has to follow the code of motorized vehicle, and same with helmet laws, like, so kids who are on an e-bike, just like on a bike, have to have a helmet.
Turning, I'm turning to our chief real quick.
Oh, I got dun dun dun.
There's a lot of, good evening again. There's a lot of uncertainty, um, with e-bikes and other e-electric vehicles, um, at the state level right now, and they're working through some, several pieces of legislation. We'll see what, what, what comes through. Um, there are more manufacturing guidelines than enforceable speed limits with e-bikes. Uh, the, uh, e-bikes are not supposed to travel more than 20 miles per hour, but that's not a vehicle code, um, section. That's a more of a manufacturing requirement. The helmet laws and all other laws, um, are consistent with regular non-electric bikes. So the age requirement for a helmet, age requirement for riding on a sidewalk as opposed to not riding a sidewalk are all consistent with non-motor, uh, non-motorized or non-electric bikes. So they are not registered vehicles as a motor, like a motorcycle is. So they're, uh, they're a little bit different and a little bit challenging. We're waiting for the state to hopefully give us some guidance soon. Um, but we're pretty close.
Thank you, chief. If only we knew someone at the state level who could help with this. Okay, is that it? Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, um, I did just want to report that I had the privilege and opportunity to go to Sacramento, uh, last, I guess, you know, a week-ish ago, uh, as part of the League of California Cities Peninsula Division, uh, representing us, uh, as a San Mateo County at-large member, um, asking our local legislators to prioritize support and local funding for affordable housing and homeless prevention, homelessness prevention, infrastructure investment, maintaining the vitality of our local economy and, uh, environmental preservation. Uh, and it was just a special experience. It was kind of my first time in the Capitol, um, and, uh, it was, I, it was, uh, it was quite nice. Um, so thank you for offering me that opportunity. Um, thanks to all who applied for boards and commissions. I'm looking forward to many nights of interviews in May, and meeting a lot of awesome people, um, who surely have a lot to bring, uh, in helping us achieve goals here in the city. Um, and we did also have a legislative committee meeting, uh, last Monday, and we received a presentation from, uh, CPPG, which has just begun, uh, helping the city in, uh, grants, finding and support, but also in, uh, providing some, uh, legislative infor, information on what's going on at the Capitol. And, uh, we, we're, we're in early days of, of receiving the, the sort of information that would, um, that would benefit a legislative committee, uh, bent on, you know, taking positions on behalf of the city, uh, to support the city's interests more in the fashion of, say, what the League of California Cities was doing, uh, the week before. And, uh, we, we ended up, uh, the, the city did effectively support two bills from Assembly Member Pappan, uh, Assembly, Assembly Bill 60 and Assembly Bill 650. But, um, and we, we didn't, uh, at that point, take, uh, a position on any other bills that we were presented with at that time. And yet, uh, I, I was, uh, concerned and remain concerned about AB 306, I believe. That was brought up by a couple constituents. Yes, uh, right. Uh, this is, this is a bill that, uh, I, I think, has the potential to threaten the, the progress we are trying to make with a program such as Electrify San Mateo. And, um, so I, I do feel that I would like to ask my fellow council members to consider, uh, allowing, uh, CPPG to draft a letter, um, in, uh, in, in opposition to AB 306. I, I would say, I potentially, I would defer, there can be some more learning on it. In our committee meeting, I think, uh, CPPG mentioned, uh, an interest in watching. They were concerned about it. They felt like cities like ours would be concerned for its impacts. And, um, so maybe there's something like an oppose unless amended, but.
So I think, um, if you'd like to have CPPG provide a draft letter for consideration at upcoming, uh, council meeting.
Okay. I'd be, I'd like to learn more about it, so.
Okay, got it. So what I can do is I can have CPPG provide kind of their write-up on 306 and, uh, weekly update for all of you, and then maybe get further direction at the next council meeting.
Maybe a potential draft letter as well, so we can review it, and if we like it, we can go right into.
I'm, I'm not seeing consensus here.
No? Okay, well, I tried.
Oh, I'm just saying that I think our next meeting is our legislative update anyway, so they're going to be here, tell, talking.
Oh yeah, so they're gonna have.
So they're gonna have to tell us about the bill anyway, so.
There you go.
Okay.
Thinking.
That's right. It's at the next meeting, so there you have it.
Uh, well, I mean, I suppose so. I, I, I am trying to bone up on my legislative, uh, work, but I, I'm concerned about the scheduling of this bill, right? Um, I, I, it's passed the assembly already and is, uh, I think, being held up in the Senate at this point. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about how long we have to effectively take a position. But, um, if it doesn't seem to be threatening, I think that sounds fine.
Okay, that sounds fine, so.
That's the next meeting, just two weeks from now.
That's right, 14 days from today.
I'm okay with that then, thank you. Okay, thank you for the council for considering. Okay, I ask for a council extension of three and a half minutes.
We have a staff update too, so if we can add another three and a half.
Sorry, 10 minutes?
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm being silly. Okay, I get pun-strung if I get past 11:30. Uh, okay, so first off, two weekends ago, I was out of town for my uncle's memorial. I wanted to thank all of you who attended the Sound the Alarm and the Wildfire County events, and also thank you all for attending Boba Day. I'm bummed that we missed it, and my daughters were particularly bummed, but I'm glad to hear all those events went so well. Um, I wanted to let you guys know that originally, for this coming weekend, I had the session scheduled as a morning session, and about two and a half months ago, I made a commitment to attend the North Peninsula Mandarin Schools graduation ceremony this Saturday from 1:15 to 2:00. So I'm wondering if we can, like, I don't know what happened in that, I'm assuming someone must have had a conflict in the morning, but I'm wondering, oh, I'm wondering if, uh, we can push it back then one more hour. I mean, I can get to there by 2 o'clock, because it's Hillsdale High. Is, I don't think it's going to go that long, but it would be slated 2 to 6, and maybe it'll be 2 to 4, but I'm sorry. Otherwise, I've got to cancel out on these, and I made a commitment.
I see nodding heads of a majority.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, so.
Okay.
Okay, so two.
We'll do 2 o'clock start time for.
2 o'clock start time, and then, does anybody want to go with me? Because I can bring a second person. It's just down the street of Hillsdale. No? Okay, well, you're going next year then. Okay.
Yeah, I would, except I do have this conflict, and I was actually thinking it was going to be tight for me to make it at 1:00, so I, I approve of this.
This worked out great, and I promised that we won't be there till 6:00. Well, as much as I can. Um, I was at, we were all at the event this weekend, the Progress Seminar, and a lot of people had their lapel pins, and it came to my attention that our newest two council members don't have lapel pins. And so I was cleaning the mayor's desk and found that I have exactly two lapel pins. So I wanted to give you both congratulations on making it halfway through your freshman year of being council members, and wear your pins with pride. And Martin, we need to get new lapel pins. Uh, our city manager also doesn't have one, so there you go. That, what? I just gave it to you. All right, that's all I have. Thank you so much. I will turn it over to staff's report.
So we want to give a quick Bay Meadows meeting update. Our assistant city manager will do that right now.
Oh, thank you, I forgot about that.
So, thank you. I just wanted to, um, give a brief report. We had a meeting with the community members at Bay Meadows on the 22nd of April. It was regarding the resumption of the two-hour, um, parking limit enforcement. We heard from about, I think about 30 or so, community members, and we presented options for what they could do to address the parking, um, enforcement, and how it was raising concerns and presenting some, some complications for them, um, logistically, as they carry out their, their daily routines. Um, they ranged from self-resolving, um, through onsite, um, resolutions, um, and through their HOA, their property manager, or their daily habits, to, um, pursuing planning applications and, um, pursuing different, um, resolutions with the city. Um, what they asked us to do was to look at potentially pausing enforcement while they explored some of these potential options. And, um, we landed with agreeing to talk to Wilson Meany on their behalf, which we did begin that conversation. Um, we are going to be reconvening with Wilson Meany. They were going to be getting some data from us. And we also agreed to look at some potential other options to dig a little deeper to see if there were any other, um, potential avenues that they could pursue that we didn't look at, given the time that we had between, between then and the time that we met with them. Um, there may be some additional options that would take some city resources to pursue, and we could dig into things that would be city resource intensive, and we could look at what it would mean to pause enforcement, or to adjust time durations and things of that nature, if council were to direct us. Before we would go in that direction, um, we wanted to run it by you to see if there was any appetite from council for us to start doing anything more than, um, than simply looking at the options on the table that would be pursued by the residents themselves.
Speaking as one through the mayor?
Yes, of course.
I, I would strongly recommend you do that. You, you go through the options on the table before we look at changing parking permits or stopping enforcement, because that would have citywide implications potentially. And, uh, you know, it's, it's tough, but, um, I, I, I would not want to set that precedent. And I also heard, and I don't even know whether it's just urban myth, but I heard as soon as the parking permit started being reinforced, that some of the buildings started charging quite a lot of money for parking.
And that's definitely true. It's not urban myth. All the, all the apartments were not charging for parking, and now they are.
Right, well, I, I would say there is an area for fruitful discussion, is, you know.
So, so I know that City Attorney just whispered in my ear that this is not a item for, you know, full discussion, but I guess we're just looking for council direction, if you want us to use significant staff resources moving here. I see a no. Uh, can you put it on the microphones that we know?
Yeah, I, I would agree with, uh, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
And, I'm sorry, can I give three pieces of feedback, though? I'm sorry. So, the first was, these are things that we can do pretty quickly, I think. Franklin Templeton, introduction to, uh, the, the management of Franklin Templeton to see if their HOAs can rent some of the empty lot space. That's something we should be able to do quickly, um, separate, but along the lines, uh, looking at pickup spots, uh, for delivery for the retail, because they don't have any, you know, 10 to 15 minute parking for pickup for food. Um, and then, we did hear, and I think you've confirmed this, that the below-market rate apartments cannot be charged $150, because it puts them over the BMR cap. So I would like to make sure that we do those three very small things, and then beyond that, I would have no appetite to do more.
So I would just point out that looking at changing the street parking, I think, just goes against what we just heard from the other council members, that is changing the street parking. But the other things we, we are doing, that's working with the developer.
Talking about the retail piece.
I'm only talking about the retail piece, I'm talking about.
That's part of the change in the street parking overall, that does trigger, uh, changes overall to, to the parking over there. But what I'm hearing, okay, is.
I'm okay with that, but I asked.
He did.
So I see, so.
Sorry, I just want to be clear. So I have no interest in changing the street parking. So is that what we're all?
That's, that's exactly, that's exactly what I'm looking for confirmation. I'm, I heard it from Councilmember Diaz Nash, I heard it from Councilmember Fernandez, I'm hearing that from Mayor Newsom, I'm hearing that from Deputy Mayor Lorraine jumped in, Councilmember Sorko Guditsky, I see a nod.
I still want to go back to those. I still want to go back to those two reservations, though. I want to make sure that if they aren't legally allowed to charge the BMRs, that we're making sure we're following up on that.
We'll send letters, yes.
And.
We're doing that.
And then the introduction, which takes.
The introduction for the lot, absolutely.
Thank you.
So that's the direction we have for next steps from the council. Thank you. And that's it on our end.
All right, then this meeting is adjourned at 11:50. Same day.